Planning Commission meeting. Since there are so many folks here, I thought this would be a good opportunity to get a show of Yeah, well, if you stop talking, you could hear me. So, I would like to get a show of hands on how many people here tonight think that the red-winged blackbird should be our city official bird. Ah. Does anybody think the chickadee should be? No? Okay. Very good. What do we have against eagles? Okay, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dotson?
Yes. Do any of the commissioners have any amendments to the minutes from our last meeting? Or corrections? I had one that I forwarded, I think. I had one that I forwarded to you, didn't I? Daryl, is your microphone on? Could you just drop it?
I can't find it.
Okay. Okay, then, can I get somebody to move to approve the minutes?
I move to approve them.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dotson?
Yes. This is a continuation of the legislative public hearing regarding consideration of ZO-18-01 and CB-18-01 four-dune management plan amendment. The city of Cannon Beach is requesting zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan text amendments updating the city's four-dune management plan. The zoning ordinance text amendments request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section 17 dot 86 dot 07 oh a amendment criteria. The comprehensive plan amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of the statewide planning goal 18. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
Aye.
Does any member believe she or he or she has a personal bias? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is your fifth public hearing on this topic. The material that I gave you in the staff report is, the only thing new was a sort of a table summarizing what I thought were the technical issues that might frame a discussion about this. And the other material is as it was during the last hearing. You have a substantial quantity of new correspondence, though, in front of you, two packets that we've received in the days preceding this hearing. The hearing is still open from the previous hearing. With respect to the hearing process, I'd recommend that you hear first from anybody who hasn't already testified, and secondly, from people who've testified before and need to expand, amplify, or give you new information. If at all possible, I'd recommend that you get to the end of oral testimony tonight and close the hearing to new information. If you don't, you may well find yourself in the same position next month with an additional pile of new information. But that's your call about whether you close the hearing and continue it. If you close the hearing, you can move to deliberations and either deliberate tonight or push off your deliberations to the June hearing. If you do that and close this hearing, that would be, obviously deliberations only, no new testimony.
Well, I'll let you know that we are going to close the testimony tonight.
Okay.
So that there won't be any additional information.
Okay. Well, after the conclusion, I would make that announcement.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, at the end of the testimony and your discussion, if there's anything staff can bring you that'll help you frame up your decision, let us know, and we'll try to get that to you. That's all I have.
Okay. "The pertinent criteria to be considered or noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement and evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues preclude the appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall first recognize the chair, give their full name and mailing address, and if appearing to represent a representative capacity, identify who they represent."
Daryl? I'm getting some signals from the audience that I can't hear you. Could you move that microphone a little closer?
Can you hear me now?
No, we're close to it.
Lean into it.
When you talk down, when you go like this, we can't hear you.
Well, that's okay. Are you doing that again? Well, I'm surprised, because usually this thing is way over there and everyone can hear, so maybe there's something wrong with the mic. Okay, so we're going to, those that haven't testified in the past, those are the folks I want to come forward and give their presentations. So, and as far as I'm concerned, if you're for or against the plan, either way, or if you're in between, you can still testify. So, anybody that hasn't testified in the past, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Tim Ramey. My wife, Carrie, and I are homeowners and residents and voters at 628 Oak Street in Cannon Beach. I'd like, I have only been a homeowner there for a short time, but have owned property in Cannon Beach for many years, at Breakers Point before that, so I'm fairly familiar with this dune management issue. And I've been around Cannon Beach and Breakers Point and Chapman Point for a long time and have seen the dune accretion over the period of my involvement at Cannon Beach. It's very clear to me that management of the dune is in the public interest. It makes a lot of sense from an access standpoint, from an ADA standpoint, from the ability to get people onto the beach. Right now, the four dunes are very difficult to climb. And so from a public access standpoint, we have the Sixth Street access, just a hundred yards or so south of my home. It's difficult to get over that. And, you know, certainly, we all care about views, we all care about our beautiful ocean, and I have yet to see any evidence that management of the dune causes any issue longer term. Yeah, there might be the issue of having some machines out there for a couple of weeks, but my point of view is, this is something that preserves the integrity of Cannon Beach, it preserves the property values of people who own property adjacent to the ocean, and it preserves the public's right to egress onto the beach. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mailing address is 5651 Zena, Z E N A, Road Northwest, Salem, 97304. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? So, state your name and mailing address.
Okay. Hello, my name is Camille Shiwi, and my mailing address is 5240 Southeast Hawthorne Boulevard in Portland, Oregon. And I'm a co-owner of a unit at Breakers Point, of Unit 104. I'd like to start by saying that I'm dismayed, saddened, and deeply disturbed by the concerted efforts of local individuals to support the destruction of the native ecosystem of the coastal dune at Cannon Beach. To quote Tom McCall, "No selfish interest should be permitted through politics or otherwise to destroy or even impair this great birthright of our people." And I could not agree more. It is our birthright to protect the native, the native ecosystem, not to protect the invasive spread of a non-native plant species that is blanketing the dunes. European beech grass, Amophelia, I can't remember the last part of it, is the grass that covers our dunes, and it's classified in this state and in the U.S. as an invasive species. So why is there a fight to preserve a destructive invasive native plant that is eradicating, and it's a non-native species? It's eradicating native plants. Coastal beech and coastal dune communities along the west coast have been dramatically altered by the spread of non-native invasive European beech grass. Invasive European beech grass has converted once-open, low-lying sand dunes that gently rose from the ocean with a sparse covering of native plants into tall densely vegetated monoculture ridges that have now overcrowded native plant species. If there is a cry to protect our birthright, yes, let us protect it by restoring the native ecosystem to this coastline and to this beach, and by eradicating European beech grass. Breakers Point has submitted an extensive plan for restoration of the dune and reintroduction of native plant species. Breakers Point Restoration Plan has been approved and supported by the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Service. So, and currently, there are current management restoration projects up and down the entire west coast, California, the Oregon dunes, to eradicate European beech grass and restore those lands to their native plant biodiversity. So, save the dunes. And save the dunes by restoring them to their native state, by restoring native plant species to the dunes, and eradicating the invasive native ecosystem by removing European beech grass. That's all I have to say. So I just, I feel very strongly that we're losing what was once here as a native ecosystem. And you look out at our shoreline, and it is a blanket of one grass. There are no diverse plants in that. We've lost our diversity because of the way that that grass invades coastal areas. And it is classified as invasive, so thank you for listening, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I want to remind people that if you're testifying, that if you have already testified, we don't need to hear what you've said in the past, and if you've already written letters, we have that material in front of us. So if you're testifying, you need to bring something new to the forum. You want to speak? All right, come forward.
My name is Paula Anctil Ramsey. My husband, Jim Ramsey, is back there.
And your mailing address?
6625 West Burnside, Portland, Oregon, 97210. We're part-time residents at Breakers Point in Unit 453, 20-plus years. It was a dream of our family. I'm going to speak to you from a more personal, I have not testified before, and I want to tell you how some of these things that have been talked about tonight are affecting us personally. Our dream was to be at the beach and enjoy this beautiful community that some of you are fortunate enough to live in full-time. We borrowed, begged, stole, used, I don't know, smoke and mirrors to come up with a down payment and get into the place, and ultimately, our plan is to retire here. But when we bought into the place, it was, Cannon Beach had zoned a place that had access to the beach, and had pathways and benches and a sprinkler system. All of those things now are covered in dunes that were not permitted to grade or maintain, or, and now our property values have eroded, and my mother can't get, she can't get from the condo down to the beach anymore. Maybe that's normal, she's in her 80s, it's not that easy. My sister has MS. She can still walk around, but we don't have access, it's not maintained anymore. And it's supposed to have been permitted in the deeds of our property that there would be access that was there when we bought the place. At some point, the native grass that the last young lady referred to, or the European grass, was introduced, and that's when all hell broke loose. And it was pointed out, we came to Dr. Allen's presentation last year on the geological effects that grass and the winds and the erosion and wind over time have had, and it's attracting the sand, and it's building dunes that go straight up, and it doesn't even belong here. It doesn't belong here like any of us. And we need to do something about it. And I think, I think I'm just mystified that decades ago, the city would allow a development, and yet today, make it so hard to maintain what was permitted decades ago. I just, I just don't get it. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, you? Come on forward, if you want to speak, come up to the podium.
My name is Stan Geffen. My address is 2622 Southwest Vista, Portland. And we have a place in the same building that Paula Ramsey has, Paula and Jim. And I was born in 1933. Were any of you born in 1933? I doubt it. And we went to the beach, the northern Oregon coast, for vacations when I was a little kid. That's the only vacation we ever took, went to the beach. We went to the northern Oregon coast, we never went to any other place. Lincoln City, I never heard of before. And when I was 55 years old, about 30 years ago, we were, my dream, as Paula said, came true, and we were able to purchase, my wife and I were able to purchase a unit at Breakers Point. And it was beautiful, it was wonderful. And the changes that have occurred since that time, which I think were not necessary, is pathetic, really pathetic. And the people, the owners of Breakers Point, love Cannon Beach every much as we do and you do. And we support the city any way we can. We buy our groceries in Cannon Beach, we could save a lot of money by buying them in Portland. We buy our groceries here. We eat out probably most of the time that we are in the city of Cannon Beach. We think the restaurants are great, we love the people that work in these restaurants, and they're friends of ours. And we do everything we can to support the city. We pay property taxes here, and you know how much money Cannon Beach gets out of the property taxes that the people in Cannon Beach pay? I'm not sure of the number, but we may have some information on that. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars that goes to the city of Cannon Beach, out of the property taxes from Breakers Point. It's very difficult for me to understand how anybody could deny people that live in a beautiful place like Cannon Beach, the inability to maintain that same property the way it used to be. It's unbelievable. I read this Allen report. I didn't read all of it, I'll admit it. I won't read all of it tonight either, I'm standing here. But there's one paragraph in here that I would just like to read to you. And I understand that the city of Cannon Beach paid $30,000 for this study, and another 12 for whatever else. That's a lot of money. And in this report, it says, "Increasingly, we are coming to recognize a fourth objective, which is to maintain dunes at a particular height via dune scraping in order to retain views of the ocean and to minimize sand blowing inland among properties where it can become an expensive nuisance." We have all that right in front of our unit. There's a sprinkler system that used to be a beautiful lawn. That lawn is now covered with sand, and we're having a heck of a time getting anybody to agree that we can remove that sand. Probably four inches of sand or more, a buildup between our unit, it's right up to the deck of the unit below ours, and the so-called cliff that goes to the beach. I can't walk to the beach very easily anymore, because the walkway that was right near our unit has probably got 10 feet of sand over it. The bench I used to sit on probably has 15 feet of sand over it, I wouldn't know. And the only access to the beach is on Sixth Avenue, and in order to get to the beach from Sixth Avenue, you've got to walk down almost a cliff, and I can't do that anymore. And I love to walk on the beach with my little dog. My dog can't walk down there either anymore. And I think it's really sad, and totally unnecessary. And this goes on to say, that it says, "This is particularly necessary in dune areas that are undergoing rapid vertical growth and backed by properties behind the dunes such as Chapman Point." Now, how can you pay $30,000 for a study? The study comes out and says this, and you're having trouble making a decision? I don't get it. I really don't get it. Does this report mean nothing to you, so you just throw it out and not rely on what it says? I hope that during my lifetime, I can walk down to the beach again, and I think the planning commission has a lot to do with whether I can or not. Thank you for your time.
Can I come forward?
Yes.
Can I bring this down a little? I'm Diana Turner. My mailing address is 3524 Northeast Clickatap Street in Portland, Oregon. People before me have mentioned the dune grass, and that's a very big part of this discussion. And I just want to read something off of my phone first, and then I'll get to my prepared comments. So, I'm reading from the Oregon Coast Aquarium's website, and you can find this under their tab, "About European Beech Grass." And I'll read directly. It says, "Towering dunes covered with thick ridges of dense grass may make for a beautiful photograph, but they're not representative of how Oregon's coast looked prior to the 20th century. Starting in the 1920s, concern that natural erosion was destroying valuable coastal real estate prompted the federal and Oregon State governments to encourage citizens to plant European beech grass, which would stabilize the beaches and dunes. Fast-growing with a tangled network of roots, the grass was very effective at holding the sand in place, but it also dominated beaches where native plants once flourished. Today, European and American beech grass coexist on many parts of the coast, although you'll have to look more carefully to find the American variety. The grass can be identified by its tall center blades, which can grow up to three feet in length. During the summer, the grass will grow a seed head which resembles wheat. It grows in thick clumps with root system that spreads throughout the sand and below. European beech grass can be found all along the west coast of the United States. It is a xerophyte, I don't know if I'm saying that right, or an organism which has special adaptations to survive in hot, arid environments, making it an extremely hardy species. As a non-native, introduced species, it is therefore classified as invasive. The grass grows naturally throughout Europe and in northern Africa. Efforts have been made in Oregon to remove this species, but only in limited success." So, to my friends at Breaker Points, my dear neighbors with all that they do for our community, that is why we have European beech grass. Because there was a decision to build a 70-unit condo on an active four-dune, and that required a change in the plantings before that four-dune, so that it could be stabilized, so that their homes could be stabilized. So, jump forward, here we are today, and onward and onward. Like the way before me, I'm going to take a more personal approach. My family has also come to the beach for years and years and years. I don't know why that chokes me up, but it does. In the 1950s, my grandparents owned a duplex in the presidential area, and my aunt, who's now in her 70s, remembers fondly driving onto the beach in the family car, piled full of kids and picnic supplies and the radio blaring. So, once again, times have changed, what we've decided to do at the beach changes. It just does, that's a part of living. I came to this discussion in 2014, like a lot of you did, when my neighbors at Chapman Point asked to grade for view enhancement. At the time, I didn't know a lot about it, I'd seen some done in the presidential area and at Breakers Point. And while I admit I don't like the way it looks, I also have great sympathy for my neighbors who have lost their view. My primary residence is in Portland, where I too have a view property. I live on a ridge, surrounded on the sides on a double lot with beautiful redwood trees, an invasive species. My red, I've lived in my property for 16 years. When we moved in, we had a straight view of downtown Portland, which I enjoy. In the 16 years, the redwoods have grown. My view is closing in. My city will not allow me to remove these trees. I'd like to have my view, but I also like to live in Portland, where I enjoy every day all of these trees. So, an invasive species, a redwood, is in my property, and I need to decide. Does this property still work for me? Am I still enjoying it? Or is it time to move on? A couple of years ago, my street was designated a bike route that caused speed bumps to be put in the middle of my street, all the way down the way. There are now signs and maps and directions to use my street for bikes. Again, I have more traffic, I have more people, I have speed bumps, but you know what? It's okay. Again, I have personally made the decision that though this change isn't ideal, I accept it for the greater good. And as a property owner, I have to continually assess if this investment still works for me and meets my goals. I don't expect that I'm going to change Portland from wanting people to use bikes, I don't expect that I'm going to change Portland for wanting to have beautiful trees. And I'd also like to say, thank you for buying your groceries here, thank you for being good neighbors, thank you for volunteering at the American Legion, I appreciate all of that. I appreciate you. I appreciate you. This is not personal. So, we slog through these meetings, these last few years. We've heard a lot of great, magical recalling of personal history, people looking out windows as their grandchildren play, taking walks with families. I understand that. You just saw me get choked up thinking about my family's stories. But it's a tiring, and it's not a good way to make decisions. And so I was delighted, I clicked my heels, literally, to hear that you guys had commissioned the Dogami Report. Finally, we could have some real science to discuss this. And we could take some of the emotion out, my own included, and really look at this in a thorough, thoughtful way and make some good decisions for Cannon Beach. And I think generally, you guys have done a wonderful job. I mean, there've been a lot of good decisions. There's a lot to be proud of about the way Cannon Beach is run. And we waited, and we waited. And last May, Dr. Allen came and he made his presentation. And he began by saying, "First Cannon Beach needs to decide if they want to continue dune grading." And I thought, yes, let's, let's start at the beginning. We've had this program for 20 years. Let's take a moment and absorb this information and decide, does it still meet our needs? And when I say "our," I mean this community, the almost 1,700 who are here at the 2010 census. I mean, please throw me in as a homeowner and a part-time participant in the city, and please include everyone else who comes to Cannon Beach to enjoy it and to be enriched by the experience. So my understanding was that we were going to start at the beginning, that we were going to look at, are we continuing? Does this work? And how should we do that? My understanding from there was that Crest had been hired, again, an organization that I heard nothing but great things about, that they were well-regarded and would help us as a city decide how to implement whatever plan we should come up with. I understood that Hannah Dinkbar, I hope I said that right, would use her dual master's degree in planning and science to take the good science that Dr. Allen had provided and to translate it in a non-political, non-biased way into good city planning recommendations for all of us. And again, we waited and we waited and we waited. And I know that was frustrating for everyone, you included. So 11 months passed, and then we had last month's meeting. And with it, the new revision. And that meeting was a doozy, I think it was for everyone. Lot of frustration before that meeting, trying to wrap our heads around. And when I say "ours," I'd say, I'm here today with the Friends of the Dunes, a small group that's growing every day and has great concern on this issue. So, we tried really hard to understand what had been presented last May and what was now presented in April. And like many of your commissioners, it was not clear to us either. We were not given good tools so that we could participate in an informed way. And I know you share that frustration. So, at the meeting, I was floored. And I know some of you have seen my letter to the editor, and I did put in some written testimony. But basically, I do commend Mr. Barnes for his honesty in stating how he had framed the objective of the Dogami Report at its inception as solely to update the parameters for dune grading for view enhancement. Quote, "If we were going to shut it down, we would not have spent the money on the Allen Report." You don't need to have an updated report if you're going to shut down the program. That really surprised me. And that's when I realized that things weren't going as I had, it wasn't following the form that I had expected. And you know, as I look back, there wasn't a form where we as a city and you as commissioners decided what are the goals of that report that we're spending $30,000 on. And I wish there were, I think that was a mistake. And then if I follow this line of thinking, the city, it seems as though that's sane. The city has decided what they want to do, and they have hired a geologist to tell them that they can do it and how to do it. So, the Dogami Report then becomes a rubber stamp for the city's decision to continue the program. And that's a waste of money, that's a waste of time and justice. So, earlier in the same April meeting, Mr. Barnes stated that the changes to the Crest document were his. And again, I really appreciate that honesty and clarity, and I wish we'd have that honesty upfront. And again, this surprised me, as I thought Ms. Dinkbar was hired for her unique knowledge as a valued expert, and that suddenly, now we're being told that she is Hannah, time-starved Mr. Barnes's girl Friday, who's putting his thoughts into a report form. When asked why he changed the numbers, Mr. Barnes said, quote, "Once, there was testimony from Breaker's Point representatives that the numbers we had and the previous document was not going to be enough to break even with the accretion rate, so I boosted that number." So again, now we're being told that the Crest Report is being used to rubber stamp a decision that was previously made without input or clarity. Really disappointing. So now, it seems as though the whole process is shrunken down to the need to find a good number to plop into the report that will work for Breaker's Point. Now, I don't think that there are any devils here, or backroom dealing, or unethical things going on. I'm not trying to say that. If I had to guess, I would say that the city sees, and Mr. Barnes sees, two equal parties and is trying for compromise. But I have to point out, there aren't two equal parties. As one of the women who spoke at the last meeting and wrote a letter said, there are 70 people at Breaker's Point. And so let's do the math with the 2010 census of 1,690 people. And we both know, a lot more people have come to the area, and people like me who own a home here that aren't a primary resident aren't included in that number, but let's use that number. That brings us to 4.35%. That's not equal. That is a minority. And then when you add in all the other people who are shareholders in our beach, the number, of course, is much greater than almost 1,700. So, while usually, I'm all about compromise, as I think it is a nice way to proceed in life, there are times when compromise is not appropriate. And so, seeing these two sides as equal and trying to reach a compromise is not appropriate. So yes, Goal 18 allows for grading. We've run that into the ground. And yes, Cannon Beach has allowed a program to exist for 20 years. But that doesn't mean that Cannon Beach needs to continue that program. And I just, I know that these are things that maybe you've heard before, but after hearing that it was never a consideration to not dune grade and that there had not even been a discussion, then I now feel like I need to say these things. Maybe I'm, again, making assumptions that aren't clear. Through this long process, and especially after the April meeting, I've come to the conclusion that no new dune grading is the right answer. Beaches are made of sand. The owners at Breaker's Point bought on an active foredune. Apparently, they didn't understand that "active" really meant "active." It's changing daily. It will continue for all eternity to change daily. So, you know, perhaps they didn't do their due diligence. I, in buying real estate, have not done my due diligence. And it hurts, it sucks. But I can't help wondering where the appreciation is that they bought real estate on an active foredune. We'll never find a number or process that will return their view for any extended time. Grading will be continually required. It just will. So if we're going to continue this program, we all have to understand that. The majority of people need to be able to enjoy our view, which is from the beach and walking through the dunes that are so hated by this minority. And we need to do it without constant grading, you know? This continuous contentious circle of permit requests for grading reminds me of the story of the Greek god Sisyphus. You two?
Hey, quiet. Quiet, quiet. Finish up your presentation.
Thank you, sir. So Sisyphus was punished for his self-aggrandizing craftiness and deceitfulness by being forced to roll an immense boulder up a hill only for it to roll back down once it nears the top, repeating this cycle for eternity. But we mortals have a different choice, and we should make a different choice. And that choice needs to be no more dune grading. Thank you.
Tom Schaefer, I live at 205 Breaker's Point in Cannon Beach. PO Box 1306 is my mailing address. Hearing the numbers being thrown around, statistics, it reminded me of my old statistics professor who said, "There's one thing you know for sure, figures don't lie, but liars can figure." There are 70 units at Cannon Beach, and the units do not have one person per unit. We have two in our house, the house across the street has five, and there's three in another unit here. There are a lot more people, plus the public likes to come up there. And there just was a huge storm that affected the dune area around Cannon Beach, created cliffs 20 feet high, where people can lose their step and fall over, and who knows how much harm will come to them. This seems to go against the state of Oregon's directive to have open roads, have an open access to the beaches. Up Fifth Street, in that area, there is no open access anymore. You come to the edge and you look down, and you see 20 feet, and some people have figured out how to weasel around the cliff there and do sort of some mountain climbing. But I'm sure people like Joe would not want to do any mountain climbing over there. I just think it's common sense that you have to follow things, and this country was based on common sense, putting together our laws and the laws of the state where you should have access to the beach. And I just feel the city's denying that, even in the face of a storm that had a catastrophic effect on the area. And they're backing off saying, "Well, we can't move any of that sand around, it's sacred. Nature set it up that way." Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak? Come forward.
I'm Robert Schwartz, the husband of Carol Schwartz.
What's your mailing address?
Breaker's Point 506 North Ash Street. Carol, who is owner of 506 North Ash Street, and I live at 1001 Northwest Lovejoy Street in Portland, 97209. I've written you a letter, and I won't repeat what's in that letter, other than to say that Carol and I are very thankful to Robin Rizley for finding the condominium at Breaker's Point for us in 1998, and we've lived there since 1998. It was our dream home away from home, and it is still our dream home away from home. The view is magnificent of Chapman Beach and Haystack Rock. But in the 20 years that we have lived there, we have seen the dunes creep up higher and higher and higher. Now, I'm an octogenarian, I don't have much more time on this earth. And at the rate this is going, our view is going to be completely obscured, as will my dream and our dreams. Now, I didn't bring, I'd like to wish, I'm sorry, young lady, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name, but...
Would you direct your testimony to us?
Yes, well, I would like to wish her that all your dreams come true. You're entitled to your opinions, but I think you're completely wrong. Okay? I didn't bring any... I didn't bring any props. But if you look at this painting on the wall by Shirley Gittleson in 1989, the year that we moved into a Breaker's Point condominium, this is the view from Shirley Gittleson's home that she painted. And if you go there today, you will not have that same view. The back of her home, and she passed away a couple of years ago, is completely covered with dunes and can't see the ocean from the first floor. And that's the similar view we have to the west and to the north. So, this is what I think we should return to. And I think the scientific reports and recommendations make it completely feasible that we can return to 1989, 1990 dune, foredune levels in a way that's responsible to all of Cannon Beach and responsible to those homeowners who have completely lost their views because they're oceanfront and have lost the value of their home besides their views and have lost their dreams. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Weiss. I'm here with my husband Stuart. And we live at 2708 Southwest Patton Court, Portland, and I have a place at Breaker's Point, 516. So, many of us have gotten in our car and driven up to Cola Park. There's a road that goes up there. Now, if there's a storm and a tree falls across that road, we all say, "That's natural. We should leave it that way." But we go in and we cut the tree out so the car can go up the road. So, to state something's natural isn't necessarily good for the society that we're in. So what I'm saying is, in this case, it may be natural that it's building up, but it is a tree across the road, and it should be remedied. When people bought in, they understood that they could grade the sand, and it was a policy... And it was a policy of the city to be able to grade the sand. Currently, it's not possible. The trees fall across the road, and they said, "Just leave it. You don't need to drive your car up to Ecola Park. It's natural." So it doesn't make sense to me. And I would like to ask, to be voted, that we can grade the sand so that we can enjoy, and everybody can enjoy, the view. Thank you. No, he hasn't. No, he has not been here.
1001, whatever it is. I haven't taken to this.
Make your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Harrison, and tonight I represent myself and my wife Jennifer Harrison. Our mailing address is 11445 Northwest Permian Drive, Portland, Oregon 97229. We spend a lot of our time here and have a home on Laurel Street, or as my wife now calls it, Yanni. Both members of the group, friends of the dunes. Before I go into my prepared statement, I wanted to comment on the comments that have been made about EBG versus ABG, for example. I'm unaware of any current studies that have been done or implementations have been done in front of coastal communities using ABG. I'm just curious if they exist and if they've been successful. As for the Fifth Street access, I know a lot of people said they're having trouble with it. We go down there all the time, and we have a lot of friends who are able to do it too. That said, we're certainly sympathetic to those who are unable to get to the beach. We submitted a letter for your February session, but because the Dagami and Crest documents have been a moving target for months, it has been difficult to know how and when to testify. We feel the problem is exacerbated by poor notifications from the city. Past the initial advertisement, I don't believe there have been any notices regarding the status of these critical documents. We don't believe that most local residents are well informed on this important issue, dictating how these mostly state-owned lands should be managed for the betterment of all Oregonians and tourists. We applaud the city's actions to refresh the science and clean up the convoluted code, but we do object to the process. With no public input regarding objectives, the process was front-loaded with dune grading for view when this was added as an objective. Goal 18 does not guarantee this is a right. And although we've all heard the analogy of the tree that grows to block our view, it bears mentioning here. We also reject the statement that the study would not have been done if the result is to stop grading for view. There are certainly other important ecological reasons for refreshing our understanding of our literal self that don't involve grading for view. Why was the public not given a chance to determine if grading for view should be an additive objective? Dr. Allen himself stated that the community needs to decide if this is something we want to do. Why were we not given that opportunity? Where are the needs, desires, and rights for others to enjoy this pristine area protected? Most of us don't want manicured dunes that continuously look like hair transplants and result in an increased view shadow developments from the beach. The beach and dunes are not a private playground for front-row homeowners. When we received the proposed comp plan changes, we noticed the policies 12 and 14 speak clearly to protect the views of homeowners. Neither policy has any language to protect the views from the beach. We would like to see language that recognizes both views. During many hearings and letters, we have repeatedly stated that we are not necessarily against all grading for view and do sympathize with the very few beachfront homeowners who do not, or who have lost all of their view from anywhere in their homes. Sadly, our support for this position is beginning to waver. We continue to see more unreasonable requests as years pass. We've seen no sign or tone of compromise and no acknowledgement that the thousands of Oregonians who have and value the natural beach could have differing opinions on how those mostly state-owned lands are managed. If you stand on Chapman Beach wearing horse blinders so that you can only see forward, the view looks the same as any other coastal town. What makes our beach special are the 360-degree panoramic views, and these most certainly include natural, unmanicured dunes with robust vegetation and hummocks to escape the view of developments. Just this week, a dune grading proponent posted on Facebook that she didn't like how those views were trying, or those without views were trying to dictate to those with views. She unwittingly proved my point. Thousands of Oregonians do have a view, a view from the beach. We've been willing to compromise, but in the absence of any reciprocity, we're now beginning to think the ballot measure to return to the days of no dune grading for view might be the only solution. We're tired of the never-ending push for more volume more often, which would condemn our beach to a constant state of ugliness. We all know how long it takes an area to recover from grading. We're tired of the mind-numbing process of poring through detailed technical documents to ensure we understand their implications and haven't missed important changes about what is being proposed that we'll have to live with if approved. We're especially tired of the tactics. The few proponents of dune grading have substantial budgets for attorneys and experts to extend their influence. We've also seen limited audience advertisements for key hearings, attempts to cherry pick approval conditions through appeals, opportunistic, overzealous extra-grading done under pretense of emergency actions, disingenuous attempts to use endangered species as a premise, and attempts to tie grading for view to erosion issues. Now, we're seeing proponents latching on to safety as a rationale for grading for view. Saying this is all about safety and not views is like saying the Civil War was only about states' rights. We've all seen what happened to the dunes on January 18th this year. The proponents will tell you that this is proof they must grade because the resultant steep face of the dunes isn't safe. If the dunes had been graded down into a ramp configuration, how far east would the water have reached on January 18th? FEMA and NFIP's definition of a primary frontal dune dictates a relatively steep seaward and landward slope, not a ramp. Just last month, we witnessed our planner tweak proposed code changes to accommodate requests from view grading proponents. In your April packet, we read the April 10th email from Planner Barnes directing attention to three sections of substantive revisions. And he also noted, I quote, "Many substantive changes, mostly reorganizing the document." "We were then shocked and dismayed to discover non-disclosed but material changes to key numbers like maintenance grading, which was changed from 2,500 cubic yards to 32,000 cubic yards." Why were our requested changes not made? The document says, "Prepared by Crest," on the front page. "We request a detailed list of changes made by staff." "We have said and still feel that the proposed code changes are not blacklined properly against existing code." "It appears to be a mix of blacklining against current code and previous versions of the Crest and staff work. Without this, it is extraordinarily difficult to ascertain what actual changes are being proposed." "I don't believe Luba would accept this in a brief, and neither should you." I wanted to say a few words about Goal 18. A few years ago, I met with Planner Barnes to learn about the history of dune grading in Cannon Beach. We discussed how Chapman Point homeowners are prohibited from grading for view because of the uniqueness of the property in terms of environmental characteristics. I was concerned about fairness because geologist Horning had said that when Breakers Point grades, more sand ends up at Chapman Point. I had read in Goal 18 that grading plans should not impact neighboring areas. And so I asked why the city would allow Breakers Point to grade if it negatively impacts Chapman Point. He went to his computer, brought up Goal 18, Appendix H, read it, and said, "It says you shouldn't. It doesn't say you can't." While this may be correct, we don't think it's right. We don't think grading should be allowed at Breakers Point in any way that would negatively impact Chapman Point. Enough is enough. We're all tired of fighting this one-way battle and self-absorbed attitudes. It comes down to trust. For the current issues, if you do vote to recommend dune grading for view enhancement going forward, we ask you the following. Please do not allow multi-year permits. A blatant disregard for the previous plan's requirements does not warrant an easier path for future actions. I know it would be easier on the city staff, or if they need more help, hire more people. Please do not allow grading actions to occur every year. We all know how terribly ugly our beach looks for years after each action. Please limit volumes to no more than 9,000 cubic yards per action. Please do not allow large amounts of maintenance grading. Please carefully, please do carefully detail how and when monitoring ports are to be done, and please specify that independent experts are used and what the repercussions should be for non-compliance. For allowing replanting with grass other than ABG, please specify an appropriate timeframe for the experiment to succeed, provide for monitoring, and detail corrective action in case of failure. Please, please do consider, carefully consider the potential impacts of grading on marine life, in particular, our razor clam population. I am unclear on how this plan would ultimately handle sand disposition. Please do recognize the rights and protect the rights of thousands of Oregonians who enjoy the iconic natural beauty of our beaches and dunes, above the needs of a very small number of homeowners with a view problem who would eviscerate our dunes for their own benefit. I know you're under pressure to render a recommendation, but I would urge you to hold firm and not rush to a vote until you're comfortable and confident. Because you've not had the final documents very long and because Dr. Allen has not been before you in a year, I would suggest another work session for discussion prior to a vote. If you do decide to reject this plan, I would ask you to detail your objections as much as possible. Thank you for your continued service to this tedious, contentious, but important issue. Please vote no on this plan as it is currently written. Thank you.
My name is Ed Stone. My address is 4540 Northwest Malheur Avenue in Portland, 97229. And I have a unit at Breakers Point, 402 North Breakers Point Court. I am an original owner at Breakers Point. We bought our home there in 1981. And interestingly enough, the conversation about stabilizing the dune and the fact that Breakers Point was an active four dune, the arguments that were, I heard against Breakers Point when, when the development was being approved in the early 1980s wasn't that the dune was growing. The stabilization they were talking about is this dune is eroding. They even quotes from the Bible, "The wise man built his house upon the rock." And that if you build that, those condominiums up there, that dune is gonna erode away. Stabilizing this dune is important for even this development. So when I hear the arguments about the goals and so forth of stabilization and the fact that the dune was active, those goals, if they're interpreted that way, work against the problem of Breakers Point today, which is not erosion but accretion. So that's my point on that. Now, as to views, I've been coming to these meetings for four or five years, I think. And the first meeting I came to, a woman who was opposed to grading something like 17,000 cubic yards of sand had a cardboard box out here. I don't know if any of you folks remember that or not. Cardboard box. It was three by three by three. And her argument was that, "Can you imagine looking at this box?" "Well, there it is. Jesus, I didn't even see it." Yeah. You know, I was sitting back there, and I didn't even see that. Well, that's the box. That's the box. Now, here's the, here's the fact of the matter right now. This three-by-three box is a perfect illustration for the reason why we should be allowed to grade the dunes. The dunes in front of Breakers Point, in front of my condominium there have increased in height a minimum of 52 feet from where they were when I bought my condominium there. And so if you take this box and put another box on top of it, and another box on top of it, and another box on top of that until it gets up to over 52 feet, that's seventeen-plus boxes, and that's about a four-story building. And that, that's the illustration for what's been going on with the dune. And I'm in complete agreement with all the letters of my fellow supporters of this, the dune grading here in Cannon Beach. Access is a huge issue, and safety is a huge issue. I have a son-in-law who's had three stem cell transplants. He has amyloidosis. He has braces from his knees to his feet. He's 50 years old. And he can, there is no way in this world he can ever get down to that beach again. I have grandchildren that play all over the dunes. And in some places, I'm nervous about the dune falling over on some of my grandchildren. So I think there's access and safety issues that are, that are very, very real. And then one last issue here, and that has to do with property values. I want to give you a little illustration of my own personal issue with property values. I appealed my property assessment in 2013 because with all the dune accretion, property values were going down. I have a nice unit at Breakers Point. It's upstairs, and it's, it's a good unit. In 2011, my appraised value on my unit was $1,013,057. In 2012, it dropped down to $820,000. In 2013, when I applied to the county to have my assessment lowered, it was $779,547. I, I applied for a consideration to have the assessment lowered, and the county was so much aware of the issue in Breakers Point and the falling home values there that they agreed that if I would remove my request, that they would lower my assessed value for the next year to 655,000. Well, I thought that was great, and I said, "I'll accept that. I'll withdraw my application for reconsideration of my value if you agree to do that," and they did. But the funny thing was, next year, they lowered it even further than that to 576,000. My property tax appraisal for my unit in Breakers Point for 2017 was $515,224, which is down $497,833 in about six years. And so this is real, and it's, and it's serious as far as owners at Breakers Point. And I just hope that you folks will look at the science, look at the recommendations, and do the right thing, and let us grade the dunes. I won't go into the, Susan, or Lisa, I think, you know, I had some nice pictures of what everything looked like back in 1982 for everybody to see. And the dune used to go down, it's, like I said before, 52 feet above where it was before. When my wife and I first moved there with four little girls, we could see them playing out on the beach. We can't see the beach. We're upstairs. We've got one of the better views remaining at Breakers Point. We cannot see the beach. We can see the ocean way out there, you know? On the horizon, we can see the ocean. If we're looking straight ahead, we can see it looking to the south and looking to the north a little bit. But we cannot see the beach. It's gone to us. It's not an ocean view. There's, there's a beach view. And we don't even, we don't have our beach view anymore. We have an ocean view, but we don't have a beach view. That's where our children play. That's where we are able to participate and enjoy the people coming to the beach. And so it's my hope that the right thing will be done here and in the interests of people. Just one other thing here, you know, property tax. My assessment went down from a million... My assessment went down from a million-
I think you've made your point.
Yeah, a million to 500,000. My property taxes haven't changed a bit. As a matter of fact, my property taxes in 2017 were higher by $189 when they were, when the appraised value was over a million dollars. So, Breakers Point people pay their way here, and thank you for your, your time.
I want to remind people that we don't need to repeat the stories that we've heard and what we've read about. If you're coming up to speak, I want you to speak about something that we haven't heard before. So, are there any other people that'd like to speak?
My name's Paul Abels. My residence, 16710 South Springwater Road in Oregon City, and I also own a unit in Breakers Point. I wasn't going to speak today, and I did write you a letter, but as I sit there, I'm, I've been a developer for 30 years, and I've been a rancher for 30 years. The environment's very important to me, and the real estate business is important to me. As I sit there, this one lady, young lady said, "Let's think of the greater good." And to me, the greater good is not, well, let me just give you an analogy or an example. I can look out my condominium, and I can look down, and where the river comes across, I can see thousands of people out on the, on the beach. No people, no people on our beach. Maybe 10, 20, 30. And I thought about it a little more, and I thought, you know, this, this isn't a view, this isn't a view situation. The people that are against this simply are NIMBYs who don't want to give up anything. I'd say, you know, I, personally, I, I got a view out. I, I've got a three-story building, and I, I see the ocean quite well. But as I sit there, I wasn't going to talk, but I just said, you know, Governor McCall said, you know, "Everybody, come to Oregon, but don't stay." And I get the same feeling from these same people, that come to Cannon Beach, but don't, don't cause any ruffles. While we pay our way more probably than the average homeowner pays, and yet, they're saying, "No, you don't, you don't have a right. You haven't been here. You haven't lived here." And when I think of the greater good, and I build apartments, over the years, ADA, I used to say, "Holy mackerel, you, I gotta put a sidewalk. I can't have any stairs. I gotta put a sidewalk around and around and around so wheelchairs can get to it?" And we can't do, we can't make the beach accessible? It, it's, it's just crazy. It's crazy. And that's all I have to say, but there's a selfish side to this thing, and from my point, it's not a money, it's not a money deal. It's just, for you folks, you should look hard at the economy, economical effect on your city, but there are people here that simply are being selfish. Thank you for your time.
Is this the end to the testimony?
I've spoken before, but I don't know if people, if people have spoken before. I spoke in January, but I-
If you have something new to offer, come up.
My name is Clay Newton. I live at 3524 Northeast Cliquetet Street in Portland. My wife and I own a house here in Cannon Beach. You know, I had some ideas of what I was going to speak to tonight, and I'll still touch on them, and certainly you have my letter that I submitted in January and, or that I again submitted to you in this newest round. As I sit here and listen to these conversations, one thing I can't help but think, and it's a bigger picture, forgive me if I ramble on a little bit, but there are a lot of passionate people here tonight who are probably more involved in politics than any other place and any other time in their lives. I know that's true for me, and it's because I care about this place. I don't wish, hate, I don't have any vendettas against people, but I give a damn. That's why I spend time to read, I think mind-numbing was the description of that sand dune report, a mind-numbing report, and then read it again to see what kind of changes there are, and read the crest report, and read the comprehensive plan report, and read the suggested zoning changes report. It's not because I'm out here looking to prove that someone shouldn't have something I don't. It's because I want to protect this beautiful, pristine place we all love. As I hear people saying, "You're right, you're wrong, I'm right, you're wrong," I can't help but think we're being very one-dimensional in the conversation. We're thinking about one perspective. I can tell you, this conversation has divided my own house. I have come before you as a proponent of dune grading. I did that in January, and before you tonight, as a continued proponent of the plan in front of you, but with reservations about the way it's written. I don't think that the people who are saying anything different from what I'm going to suggest to you in a minute are right or wrong. We just have a different perspective. Frank Patrick came up to me and handed me a picture of his view from Breakers Point. It had a beautiful view of Haystack Rock, and he said, "Clay, isn't this beautiful? See what we used to have?" And what I saw was a table, flat, dune, with a bunch of stubs for grass, and I thought it was ugly. Out of respect, I didn't say anything, and I still think it's a beautiful view of the rock, but I don't think grading is beautiful. I'm not saying I'm against it. I just think it should be cautiously approached, because there are other people who don't like it, who don't respect that opinion. There are three goals that were outlined in the Dagami Report. I'm not going to read them, I outline them to you, or I reference them in my letter to you, but they are these: to maintain stable dunes; to maintain weak points or to reinforce weak points in any dune system. That's the second goal. And the third is to provide valuable habitat for wildlife and plants. Views are listed as a fourth objective, but Dr. Allen stipulates they are a secondary objective in that goal. You have to protect the first three before you go to the dunes for a view. I'd also like to challenge the, the idea of view in that report and that you've heard tonight. I think my view counts too, and I don't like to look at table-flat dunes. Not saying don't do it, not saying I'm against it entirely, but I am saying I think it needs to be done thoughtfully. There's another conversation that's concerning, and that's around this European beach grass. There's a lot of conversation around native, invasive, non, non-native. That grass, in the Dagami Report, is stated as the most effective way to trap sand, period. To risk taking what is now a conditionally stable foredune is to, is to potentially commit that entire dune to being unstable, and those structures behind it, to sand inundation, which was a prior issue back in the 80s and 90s, as I understand it, and potentially the way the code is written, to an endless cycle of grading. There are currently multi-year permits proposed or written into the zoning code and maintenance Take the least effective grass, the native option, which doesn't trap sand as well. Dr. Allen says it's the worst of the three options. Put that on the foredune. What happens when it's inundated with sand? Where does the sand it doesn't catch go? Over the top. What happens when you have a maintenance provision? You can come right back over the top, grade it down, and start over. Why does it matter that it's native? It's there for a year, it's gone. It's there for a year, it's gone. It's there for a year, it's gone. That makes no common sense. What does make sense is what the crest proposal suggested. Near the structures, American beach grass. Try American beach, European beach grass near the structures. Try American beach grass out front. It creates that lower dune profile. That will create or allow for some view there. Don't broadly, across the dune system, at Breakers Point in particular, put that system in place until it's been tested. The specific codes, I said that, I'm going. I, I think there's a lot of people who, who might have, who might say, "Well, you're anti-dune." I'm not anti-dune grading. I'm not. In the proposal I put before you, I suggested that the limits for the cubic volume limits be increased from 8,000 cubic yards to 15,000 cubic yards. I can tell you that is not a popular stance among many of the citizens I talked to and who've talked to me about this issue. I think it's a fair stance. I think, given the sand inundation that we've been told is coming to Cannon Beach, and in particular Breakers Point, it at least holds a line. I can hear Bruce Francis right now, "Clay, that doesn't, that does not do anything more than sustain what we have. We're way over the top. How can we get ahead?" My answer would be, it's a start. It's the beginning of a start to testing new grasses out there, to testing a process that might work. It's to start to building some trust in a community that has none. It's to start to building a process where maybe, just maybe, I can't even believe I'd say it out loud, maybe multiple permits were issued at some point in the future, if it could be shown that this was not a reckless process, if it could be shown that the dunes were stable after some of these experimental processes, after some of these larger sand volumes were tried. So, just to sum it up, I made some specific suggestions to you. I think they're reasonable. I think reasonable people will continue to be in favor of dune grading, but if the conversation can't be swayed, if it can't be brought to a reasonable point, then you're going to have more and more people coming before you saying, "Don't grade the dunes." I hope you'll consider those reasonable, consider those reasonable suggestions in your sand grain, uh, sand dune plan. Thank you.
Okay. Look, anybody else like to testify? All right, come forward.
Susan Glarum, PO Box 108, Cannon Beach. This morning, I was reading through the Allen Report, and I came across some quotes that I've taken directly from this that address some issues that I am concerned about. The first one is, "Erosion and flood hazards on the northern Oregon coast will almost certainly accelerate, increasing the risk to property." Second one, "The Oregon coast is exposed to one of the most extreme ocean wave climates in the world." Third one, "When large waves are superimposed on high tides, they can reach much higher elevations at the back of the beach, contributing to significantly higher rates of coastal erosion and flood hazards." Next one, "Several studies have identified a progressive long-term increase in winter wave heights affecting the North Pacific." Next one, "In time, we can fully expect a return to conditions similar to the late 1990s, characterized by generally larger storms and bigger waves resulting in a return to more erosional conditions. To that end, management of the beaches within the Cannon Beach Sal should keep such shifts in storminess firmly in mind." Next one, "There is some concern that the placement of large volumes of sand scraped from the Chapman Point Dunes could exacerbate problems in Ecola Creek, contributing to potentially increased erosion near Large Street, modifications to the creek's flow regime, and possibly even changes to the biology of the creek." Next one, "Perhaps of greater concern is the potential to drive the creek, creek channel closer to Large Street on the north side of the channel. This particular issue remains a valid concern." And then, I have a major concern about the vegetation plan. No quotes here. "The vegetation plan in this revised dune management plan, so carefully and completely laid out, is essentially thrown out by the changes in Attachment C of, at the very end of the sand dune construction and foredune management policies, #17." By adding these words, or D in parentheses, "Another revegetation plan approved by the Planning Commission." Now, what plan would that be? While immediate, where immediate revegetation is not practical, temporary erosion control measures may be substituted until revegetation can be completed. Well, I am wondering, since when is the Planning Commission the authority in determining what is an acceptable revegetation plan, and what constitutes temporary erosion control measures? I feel this language puts the whole revegetation plan in jeopardy, as no, no one knows what it might consist of. "I hope you will consider carefully the ramifications of adopting this plan as written, and decide this wording is too loose to let it pass. Please do not approve this plan at this time." Thank you.
So, I wanted to know if there was somebody that would like to speak about this box in front of us?
Okay. My name is Lisa Frazier, PO Box 5, Cannon Beach. Lived here now. I'm just here for the summer of '92. I am the builder of the box, actually. My employee is, I own Once Upon a Breeze Kite Shop, and this is one cubic yard. And what I think is useful about this box is it represents a cubic yard, so when you are considering the volumes of sand that they are requesting that you remove, you have this as a little, little reminder as to what, what this represents. There's nobody in there or anything. And, come on out. And while I'm up here, I'm just going to say that I started with this group, Friends of the Dunes, in 2014. I had to kind of step away for a while due to personal reasons, but I'm back now, and I don't see, nor have I ever seen, any kind of compromise from the Breakers Point people. And I think now, I was, I came into this fully ready to compromise, maybe something similar to what Clay said, but now I say, "Please, just vote no. Let's just end dune grading altogether in Cannon Beach." Thank you.
All right, yes. Are there any, any additional speakers?
My name is Frank Patrick. I live at 255 Northwest Torrevue Drive, and I'm an owner at 1, 654 Breakers Point. The, the box is what I'd like to talk about first, because that's just what was talked about. When you look at that box, it looks like such a huge amount of sand, doesn't it? It isn't really a lot of sand until you multiply it times the number of times it's in front of and on the dunes of the north coast of Ecola Creek. There is roughly 400,000 of those boxes of sand that wasn't there 15 years ago. Now, maybe that's okay, but the whole point of this legislative process that came up with what we call a dune grading plan, which is a part of the Cannon Beach Comprehensive Plan, it was not to allow sand to come to that, to that level. If you look at the, the planning code that Cannon Beach has, and I've listened to you folks debate about different projects. Should we let this project go? It's going to, it's going to obscure somebody else's view who's got a house, and he's been there for 35 years. Or it's going to impact this person to the other side. Or it's going to impact this person to the other side. In fact, one commissioner's told somebody who'd bought a house and wanted to do something, "Why don't you just cut the top half of the house off?" Now, that attitude would indicate that we have a very strong policy, a public policy, that we want to maintain some kind of comity between the property owners. And so if you're going to say to a property owner, "Go ahead and add 52 feet on top of your, your area in front of it," and I think the maximum height, I meant to look, I think is 27 feet in the, in the building code. I'm sorry, I can't remember. 28, okay, 28 feet. And you look at that and you say, "This is twice the amount of view restriction that you would allow if it was a building." But the difference is, this has been allowed to accrete over a period of roughly 15 years. And so I come to you and I say, "What's the code all about? Because what you're here to talk about isn't Breakers Point tonight. It isn't Chapman Point. It isn't the Presidential Streets. All of those areas all have sand dune accretion problems. And when we talk about why this was originally a part of the plan to have dune stabilization, it wasn't to, to create dune barriers, it was to make sure that the sand dunes, not the ones that were being built upon if, if you look at it that way, but it was the houses beyond it that they were concerned about. They weren't worried about Breakers Point being stabilized. I think if you look at the development, I actually knew the developer, didn't know that I knew him until just recently. And I was hoping to get him out here to talk, but I wasn't able to, to run him down. The goal was to main, make sure that you didn't inundate the people behind it. And so when these units were built, there were a lot of people said, "Oh, you're building on sand." I wasn't here, I wasn't a part of it. The people, most, for the most part, I don't think we have anybody left that originally was a buyer in Breakers Point. The people, sorry, I guess I shouldn't have said that. Maybe I should ask, how many people actually own at Breakers Point? You ought to at least let them know. But the point of the matter is this, is that when you have a, a development, a piece of land that's committed to development, like this piece of property is, or like the Tol of Anna Inn is. The Tol of Anna Inn, basically built on riprack, okay? Rocks, huge builders that were brought in. And everybody looks at that and says, "That's horribly ugly." Here we have a simple situation. On one side of that property, of the side of the Ecola Creek, you have this incredible accretion of sand. It's right now, I think, at 54 feet at the highest point. It may be even a little higher, it didn't go back out. That 54 feet now has developed into between 10 and 15 feet of sheer drop-off. I heard someone say here one night that he was in his 80s and he had no problem getting up and down. The truth of the matter, that's no longer true. In fact, it has not only become a sheer drop-off, but now the actual beach itself is narrower. You are losing beach to the sand encroaching towards the water. And so the question is, is why are we stabilizing a, a system by continuing to have a problem of buildup of sand that now we're saying, "Oh, don't let them grade the sand at all." I think the folks at Presidential Streets, by the way, are going to be real surprised to hear that this is a change in policy. Everybody thought that the city of Cannon Beach kind of had a legislative intent to take and upgrade the science of their report. Is the science changed that originally said, "Let's have a sand grading program, and here's the legislation that we put in, into the code." And the science, every bit of the science, has actually enforced and supported exactly what this committee, this Planning Commission, was supposed to consider to recommend to the, to the city council. And that was this, upgrade the science, have Jay Sinewall come up, have Dr. Allen come up, have the Dagami report reviewed, and make sure that we're not doing something that is against what the original planning code, the original comprehensive plan was, was intended to do, which I think was to protect the development that was, the property that was committed to development. All of the property north of Ecola Creek is committed to development. And I suggest to you that you've got a duty as a commission, as a commission, to recommend something to the city council that actually recognizes why they spent and, and allocated this money, so that you could have a, an update of the science, to see if that science should dictate a whole different way to approach sand dune grading. And I suggest to you, there is nothing in any of those reports that would allow anybody to say the grading of sand dunes somehow or another is no longer an appropriate policy. We were so concerned about what was happening here that we actually submitted, I think that Mr. Barnes will, will confirm, that we provided alternative language for the code amendments. And I think that's before the commission, is it not?
Do you want me to answer? Sure. Yeah, you have some testimony from Breakers Point's attorneys that had some alternative suggested language.
And, and I think it was submitted to you in writing. Okay. And the goal of that was to allow this commission to have something. Otherwise, you're going to have to sit down and start writing as legislators, or you're going to have to ask Mr. Barnes to do it, or you're going to have to ask Hannah to do it. At this moment, I don't really think there's draft language, other than our draft language. I've heard about how Clay, I'm sorry, I always get it wrong, Clay Newton has suggested, he was willing to compromise. And I'm glad to hear that he's willing to allow 15 feet of, you know, 15,000 cubic yards, I should say, because there's roughly 16,000 cubic yards that come in every year. That isn't going to reduce anything, it will maintain it. But now the question becomes this, as you look at the report, as you look at Jay Sinewall's report, and as you look at what the suggestion is, when we're talking about keeping access to the beaches under the, under the Open Beaches Act, sand dunes like this don't make good access, they make bad access. And when you talk about the FEMA report, which I think candidly right now is before the city council to approve the new FEMA maps, the issue becomes, what is it that's bad about what we have now? And I think you'll find that the, this gradual slope run-up of wave activity is much to be preferred to what this is. And if you recall, Jay Sinewall said, "But we're not talking about the, the cell that is just on, on, on the surface, above the ground, above the sea level. We're talking about all the sand that goes clear out, you know, a couple hundred yards into the, into the water." All of that sand has increased, and it gives better safety if you're looking at the gradual wave run-up. What we have now is we have a wave run-up that funnels the water into Ecola Creek, and it's going to drive the water further into the city, further into, inundate Ecola Creek. And it will probably further create the erosion problem on what has already been considered the, the Large Street erosion problem. The erosion at Large, Large Street has been almost 70 feet to the north. We're now at the bare minimum of how much sand between the edge of our property and the, and the creek should be allowed. And, and the problem is, is it's because we have said we're not going to move sand. We used to move the sand over into Large Creek, in front of Large, Large Street. But now that's been stopped because grading has been stopped. Grading was stopped to prevent the maintenance of the hard surfaces in three different spaces that were supposed to be every 400 feet. And those three access points were to provide access to everyone, not just the people from Breakers Point, but the people who come to visit Friends of Breakers Point. And those access points were to allow people to walk out on what was at that time a gradual slope down to the Breakers itself. That's gone. And it's gone because we have no ability to get any removal permits to keep it clear. So my point to you is this, when you look at what you're, you're considering, it's legislation, it's not the Breakers Point, it's the Presidential Streets, it's Hampton, and it's south in Tol of Anna. And I suggest to you that the science, which is really what this, this legislation is supposed to be based on, all supports exactly the policy that has been in, in the, in the comprehensive code and plan, I think it's now for almost 17 years. And that, that plan was to be amended to consider anything in the science that would say, "This is a wrong plan to have." And there has been no testimony in the weeks that we've been here, the hours that we've been here, that says grading somehow or another is bad for the environment, it's bad for the policy of the city, and we suggest to you that it's bad, it's just plain old bad policy to suddenly change something that's been around for 17 years. My, my hope is, and, and I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Harrison and to Mr. Newton, I'd, I'd like to find out who the Friends of the Dunes are, because that's the organization in Humboldt. I think this is the Friends of Cannon Beach. And I want to make sure that most of the world says, "Do away with European beach grass. It's horrible for the environment." And I suggest to you, that was the beginning of the mistake that they didn't have science on when they started about 30 years ago. And I suggest you, don't continue that policy. But neither should you say, "Oh, we're going to pitch everything that we've had for 17 years. Throw this piece of land, Hampton in the cell, the Chapman, the Torrel cell, and we're going to just tell those people that the city is no longer going to maintain your access, no longer to maintain the services that you should expect when you build and you get building permits according to the rules and the regulations, but we're not going to let you maintain those. We're going to change policies after 35 years." I suggest to you that's wrong. We believe that you should adopt, one of the, of the suggestions that we've made, we don't believe that cubic yards is the right, right way. We believe you should use FEMA, the FEMA standards that are based on elevations that are objective standard. It doesn't matter whether it's 15 or 150,000 cubic yards. The real issue is, are you maintaining elevations that make sense under the FEMA guidelines and under the science that Jay Sinewall and the Dagami report all looks at? Now, it, it takes it away from looking at that box of sand. That box of sand sounds like a big thing. Well, it is when you've got 400 of them in front of your, your place. Any questions? Okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
My next?
Yep.
I just saw some other people with their hands up. And I know you've all heard from me before, but there are some issues, sorry, there is one particular issue that I think I can talk about, but I have not talked about. As you can read on the top of that, that's taken in 19...
So, name and address?
Oh, sorry, I thought everybody knew, but I'll put it down. Bruce Francis, P.O. Box 246, Cannon Beach. And as you can see from that depiction, that's circa 79. That is, after the completion of the first four phases, we started the fifth phase in 1980. Now, when people bought their properties at that time, they paid a considerable amount of money because they had truly beachfront property. They had access to it, and they paid a premium for that privilege. So I think that they bought it under the auspices that the city code would allow them to keep that access and that view. And at that time, that was the correct decision. Many realtors that sold the property said, "The city agrees that you can shift sand." So now I'm hearing, "We're going to perhaps stop any grading of the sand dunes." All right. I say, "Why did we incorporate Cannon Beach? You incorporate a town to provide the infrastructure for the safety and well-being of its citizens. You take protective measures for everybody that lives within the community. If this dune was outside of the incorporated area, I would be in front of our opponents leading the charge to let the dune manage itself. But we're in an incorporated area, and it's being said, it's dedicated to development." So I'm not going to argue over area, I'm not going to argue over volumes, I'm not going to argue over all the points that you, as a commission, are going to have to make, or you can push it off to the council and have them make, or you can decide, "We're not going to have any dune grading at all." But I ask, if you go with that recommendation, which a lot of our opponents are saying, "Let's stop all dune grading," we're at a point already where we're not grading for view enhancement. We're not grading to establish the view, we're trying to stop a 52 and 54-foot wall of sand impacting our livability. And that's exactly what it's doing. So everybody's living in a cave and paying a high, high premium, property values are plummeting, and the city is not getting the tax base that they need to fight the issue. We're in a death spiral. We're not going anywhere with this. You know, it's about time we get some common ground on this. Because I've asked before, where do we stop behind of the dune? Everybody says, "Let the dune manage itself." Well, what do we define as being the upper limits? What do we define as half-bury the house or fully bury the house? Where do we stop? If you don't have something in the record to allow the process to recover the dwelling from the impact of the sand, you've got nothing but a lawsuit. And I hear our opponents saying, "We're getting sick and tired of coming down here and protesting and fighting and doing all this thing." I can tell you, I am only just starting. I am only just starting this because it is stupid. And I've been told not to use that word by many people, that not to degrade my speech to the lengths that I'm about to say. But we need to have more common sense and put it on science and the written rule of law that we have. So I ask you to do something about it, please, and not abandon the ability to grade the sand dunes. Thank you.
Bruce, we have a question for you.
Okay, you talked about houses being buried, partially buried, or completely buried.
Right.
Have you been listening to what people have been saying when they've come up here from Breakers Point?
I have.
Did any of them testify that their house was being buried or partially buried? Or were they all testifying about losing their views? Which is it?
I'll tell you what they're testifying about.
I'm hearing it.
Yeah, but what they're testifying about is the present condition. You are now setting up a scenario where there will be no more dune grading. So I am now going forward a few years and saying that ramifications from that decision will result in partial or fully burying of the community. What are you going to do then? You've got no devices to take care of that problem.
No one has set up that scenario on this commission. What we have done is listened to people who feel that the sand dune should not be graded.
Right.
And they have a right to say what they believe.
I agree. And I am saying, "Don't do it because of that." That's my point of view.
You're projecting what might happen in the future, but that's, you're the only person so far who has talked to that issue.
After 40 years of living in the community and seeing what's going on, I can project with fairly good confidence that no dune grading will result in impact to the community.
Well, that's your prediction.
That's correct.
Listen, if you've already spoken, that's your turn. I'm not going to turn this into a debate. We're not debating... We're not debating amongst ourselves. You have one presentation to make, and I'm not going to allow you to debate what somebody else has said.
Just wanted to... Bruce, after that, I think we have to quote Andy Warhol. He said...
Name and...
Rexamus five-five-four.
Name and address.
Rexamus five-five-four, North Larch. Andy Warhol said, to have land and not ruin it is the greatest art that anyone would ever want to hone. So in that respect, I hope you consider that when you take your recommendation to the city council.
My name is Denise Laufman. My address is P.O., Box 565, in Cannon Beach. And I am the Director of Crest. And I just wanted to speak specifically about the vegetation recommendations that we made, that Hannah made, around European beach grass and native beach grasses. Because when we went through the Allen report, Dr. Allen was very clear about using native beach grasses going forward. And in Hannah and my discussion with Mark, he had also said, you know, the city really wants to use native grasses. And as someone who is a, who does a lot of work in habitat restoration, I am typically very much in favor of native vegetation. And so I had thought, great, let's try, let's see if there's a way that we can move this forward and have the city move forward with native beach grasses as for dune management occurs within the city. And then I was at a sea level rise workshop that was put on by EcoAdapt in Seattle, and I was talking with some folks from Humboldt County, from California State Parks, where they have completely removed European beach grass from some of their dunes and replaced it with native grasses. And this is large-scale replacement with natives. And I thought, great, I've got some experts here who are doing this with dunes, we're, you know, looking at this for Cannon Beach. I'd really love to hear what they have to say. So I reached out to them after the meeting. Hannah and I had talked about Dr. Allen's recommendations, and the recommendations that, an informal conversation, right, just over email. I reached out to the California State Parks gentleman, who's a geologist, and he said, well, the botanists and the folks who are working with this are on U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service property, we're also doing it on state parks property. And so he sent me some reports from state parks. The dunes that they've replanted with native beach grasses have very little infrastructure east of the dunes, a road that's three hundred and fifty feet east of the newly replanted dunes. The state expects that they will need to deal with that infrastructure over time because the dunes with the native vegetation migrate east. Because the native plants don't hold sand as well as European beach grass, the dunes will migrate east. And I thought, oh dear, we need to grapple with this. This is not a clear-cut answer, which often happens when you're dealing with ecosystems. It's simply not black and white, which we grapple with a lot. And I wanted to bring, I wanted to give you some context for our recommendation around this particular issue. I live in Cannon Beach, I live at the north end of Cannon Beach. We will more than likely continue to grapple with this issue going forward, but I really wanted to provide some context around this. I also emailed with the botanist that works specifically on U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service property, where they've done large-scale replanting with native grasses. She said, our dunes are stable now, but they are not actively managing those dunes. They're stable with native plants. But she said, if you are going to be replanting dunes with infrastructure to the east, your best bet is to stick with European beach grass because of the concerns of sand inundating the buildings or whatever infrastructure might be there. Which is why the recommendation we put forward was to maintain European beach grass on most of the dunes and experiment. I definitely think that we, that experiments should occur. I think doing that on the outer edge of the foredune makes some sense, with the understanding that it may not capture sand in the same way that European beach grass will. And I think Dr. Allen made that clear when we talked to him about the report, because we thought, well, maybe he would be willing to alter his recommendation a little bit, given what we had found. And he said, this is going to be my recommendation, Crest, and in my mind, the city are just going to have to grapple with this recommendation and then the other information that we've found. And so I, I just felt like it was important that you all understand why the recommendation is there and why we limited the, the use of native grass and didn't just say, let's just replant with it. It's because we investigated it, and I, I do have some concerns about yanking all the European beach grass and simply going with natives. We, we could, we may cause a problem by doing that, and we may not. But I, I do not think that the place to experiment is where there is infrastructure directly east of the dunes. Thank you.
So, so the area in California where they've changed this over to native, how, how, how long has that been in existence?
I believe the, the state parks work is relatively recent. I'm, and I, I'm, don't totally quote me, I can get you the reports. But I believe like two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen was the California State Parks. And on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service property, I believe it's a little bit, it's a little bit longer of a period of time, which is why that dune is, they consider that dune to be more stable.
Well, that's a substantial amount of time. I would think that they would have a clear picture if it's working or not, given that many years.
And I think they have enough of it, they, they know at California State Parks that the dune is migrating east. The studies are showing that, the report is clear about that. They, they state in their report that they will have to deal with the road that is three hundred and fifty feet east of the dune on the state park property. And I believe on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service property, it's just open dunes, there isn't any infrastructure that they're concerned about.
And, and do you know how they went about eliminating the European beach grass?
I believe they pulled it.
I see.
It was, I mean, that's a significant effort, but their goal was to, their goal was to get rid of it and to replant as an experiment. And my thought, as someone who works in natural resources, is, is that if Oregon wants to experiment with this, we have places where we can do that, where there is very little infrastructure. But it should probably not occur in incorporated areas where the land is dedicated to development.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Quiet, quiet. Okay, we're going to take a short break.
Yes?
I'm sorry. This is my prop, I guess. I found out about this meeting last night, oh, I'm sorry.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah. My name is Jessica Sund. I live in Presidential Streets, and speaking on behalf of Wes Mayland, who has a house on the north side on Larch. And I'm not the most political person, I hate speaking in front of people, but I really feel like there are some, a lot of stakeholders that may not be property owners, who have, should be, their voices should be heard. And I'm speaking on behalf of the people that enjoy the beach, and I think we really have to put the environment first and the beauty of the beach first. At least, please, please refrain from making any rash decisions, and I know you've been very thoughtful. I came to a meeting on For Another Purpose last summer and heard some of the comments about this. And I just hope that more, more information can get out to people. And I apologize that I am not as well-read about the issue, but I've lived here for over fifty years, and I've seen a lot of the changes in the beach. And I'm, I'm a forager, I'm out there a lot, and it is, it's, this place, it's, you don't have a right to, to live here, it's a privilege to live here. It's not a right, and we have to protect it. Thank you.
Well, if nobody is coming forward, I think we're going to close the public testimony. Is there a staff response?
Nothing substantive. If you're going to move into deliberations tonight, that would be appropriate. If you need something in the way of additional writing or structuring or something from me to make a decision, let me know. You could also continue your deliberations till next month, if you, if that is more to your liking.
Well, I definitely want to close the testimony tonight. No further testimony to be entered into the record. But once again, we have a stack of correspondence that we haven't had time to look at, so what I'd like to do is close the public testimony tonight, and then we will continue to make our decision at the next meeting.
That would be your June twenty-eighth meeting, your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll put this on the agenda as a non-hearing item for your deliberation only.
Right.
And unless I've told something differently in the interim, you'll just get a, a short pro forma of a staff report, no additional information from me.
Well, after five continued meetings on this, I can't imagine there'd be anything more to add.
I don't have anything else to say, so.
Okay.
Darrell, I would like to invite Dr. Allen back to give us a talk about his last presentation. I think it's not very clear, and I just wanted to throw that out.
Well, that to me complicates things, because if he's going to be...
You said what?
I said, that to me complicates things, because if he's going to testify, then, then we're not closing down.
Exactly.
Well, I don't, I don't want to have any additional testimony. It's like we've had five week, five months of this already.
Five years. But I think we've only had one other meeting where we had seen his report.
Could it be a work session, that we get to, get to talk to him?
Well, here's one way you can do that, or actually, there's at least a couple ways. For starters, Dr. Allen's under contract to us, so you can kind of treat him like staff in that regard. And I don't know what his schedule is, I haven't talked to him about this. One thing you could do is formulate questions, and we can get his answers in writing, or I can see whether that his schedule aligns with ours, and he's, he's able to take another trip up here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open for, for that, as long, as long as we're treating him as a staff person and not...
Yeah, so, so you can do, I guess what I'm saying is, you can do that without reopening the hearing.
Okay, okay, okay.
I would not...
But I, I think you ought to rather, I guess, what I'm hearing is, you want to hear what he sees as the changes between his first and second draft, or are you looking for something a little different?
Yeah, we want, I'd like to see an analysis of those changes and why he made them.
A little deeper dive into that than, okay, than the email he and I exchanged.
So then, he would, would we have a work session, or would we see if he could come here for the...
It'd be council deliberations, but you would be hearing from staff on this particular point, and this would be the contractor, Dr. Allen.
Yeah.
So it'd be limited to that, would be my take on what you're putting here.
If he can do it.
I'm assuming that that, yeah, now, if his schedule doesn't allow it, I guess I could, my fallback would be, maybe perhaps he could prepare a memo that addresses this, something like that, kind of send, seeing if that might fill the gap.
No.
It wouldn't, because I remember from his first time, I, I, I found that with him, that it was really important to ask him pointed questions and insist on a, an answer that is directed to that question.
Let's give that a shot, then, we'll try for that date, and if that doesn't work, we'll figure out a Plan B, perhaps a different date. But we've got enough time to, to work on that, so I'll, I'll look at that and talk to him about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so what I would often, well, this is all presumption, that there's, if, if there's no conflict, we would, we would be looking at the twenty-eighth. If there is a conflict on that date, we're probably looking at something further downstream, depending on his schedule. So I'll communicate with Darrell, who's your chairman, on that this coming week, and see if we can get something nailed down. Is that satisfactory?
This is for me. Appreciate you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, very good. Then let's move on to the next agenda item.
Large number of these people are pulling out, you might want to take a break.
I went through the ADA thing, so it applies to Oregon beach access again today, just to double check. And it seems to me that if you're making a new access or you are revamping an old access, then you have, and you have to comply with the ADA standards. But if it was something that was done before, was it one-two-seventy? Is that the, before the, yeah, then you...
Yeah, I know where you're going. We need to, we need to continue our meeting.
Right.
That ADA thing is something of a red herring, because we can do access improvements without implicating this whole...
No oral, no written... And if you were really going to, you have to be careful what you're looking for.
Okay, okay, folks, we got to get started on the next agenda item. Okay, folks, the next agenda item, this is a continuation of the quasi-judicial public hearing regarding the consideration of V-18-03, O'Brien requests for a parking variation for the existing commercial building at 273 Beaver Street. The applicant, Kelly Healy O'Brien, is requesting a parking variance to allow four off-street parking spaces in conjunction with the remodel of an existing commercial building. The property is located at 273 Beaver Street, Tax Lot 5300, MAP 5102OCB, in limited commercial zone. The property is owned by O'Brien and Company, LLC, Municipal Code Section 17 dot seven-eight dot oh-five, off-street parking, request for a minimum of, request for a minimum of seven off-street parking spaces in that location. The request will be reviewed against the Municipal Code Section 17 dot eight-four dot oh-three, three, oh-three-oh variance criteria for granting. Does anyone object to the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does anyone object to the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner feel that he or she has a personal conflict?
No.
Does any commissioner feel that she or he has a personal bias? Has the commissioner members had an ex parte contact since April 26 hearing? Has any commissioner member made a site visit? Okay, staff report?
First, Commissioner Patrick was not present at the previous hearing on this, but I believe she listened to the audio tapes in preparation for tonight.
Okay.
I just wanted the record to reflect that, that she qualified to participate tonight, even though she did not hear the original hearing in person.
Okay.
So, yeah, you at the end of your last hearing asked the applicant to go back to the adjoining property owners who had kind of volunteered an informal sharing arrangement on those, at least two of those parking spots that they have a permaneasment over, see if something could be worked out there in a more formalized agreement. And they attempted to do that and were unsuccessful. So they did not, were not able to return to you with a formal agreement. I'm looking in the audience and I don't think the applicant's here tonight either. They told me they were not going to be able to attend for, because of some other commitments and the failure of their, of trying to obtain this more formal agreement for the sharing of those parking places. I did want to kind of relay a conversation I had with the applicant on the phone yesterday and today that kind of addresses some of this. I don't know that, whether it informs your decision or not, but it gives you a little bit more background. So, no agreement for the, from the Harding, so that kind of a shared parking arrangement is informal at the best and no guarantee of any permanency on it. We talked about some alternatives if they can't get that variance. One would be to modify their use pattern in the building to something that more closely resembles the prior use and then they can thus reduce their parking requirements accordingly. And that would probably mean reducing the office space and reclaiming that upstairs space for residential or something like that. There was, you know, we didn't explore that and, we didn't take a deep dive into those numbers to see how that might work out. But something like that probably is available to them as an option. They can also seek off-site parking within 200 feet of that building. Our code allows off-road parking for a particular use to be off of the site if it's within 200 feet. And that, you see that a lot. Christian Conference Center, for instance, rents parking spots around town and that's how they meet their, their gross parking needs. Some of it is not on the main campus. And there's other businesses that do that too. So that's an option that's at least theoretically available to them. We didn't explore deep where those might be, but they're aware that that's out there. They specifically asked me, you know, if we get turned down tonight, can we reapply? And I, I did urge them, if you do decide to, if you get turned down and you're still interested in pursuing this, you ought to, you know, sort of carefully document the parking situation over the summer months there. And then in the fall, when you've got some documentation, see if that documentation is persuasive. And yeah, you can, the code does allow them to, to reapply with essentially the same proposal. And my recommendation to them was if they had some data that backed up the kind of supposition about this, they might get some traction with you. I didn't put words in your mouth or votes in your hands, so there obviously was no promise on that. So anyway, those are the alternatives I talked about with them. But the, the failure of their, of this joint parking arrangement is, I guess, the key thing that you had asked for and it's not available.
So, I mean, to me, unless we, I mean, the request was that we have something in writing. Unless that's not here, I don't see how we would really move forward to approving this.
You're on firm ground if you're headed for a denial on this.
And, and the other options of getting the 200, within 200 feet off-street, other alternative are off-street parking. They haven't done anything like that yet.
We only talked about that for the first time yesterday and today.
Okay.
So I, I assume they're looking into it. But honestly, if that, if that pans out, they actually don't need a variance from you. Like, that's something I can deal with administratively.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, that, they may be pursuing that option.
Yeah, that seems fair.
We didn't pursue it any further over the phone, but that's a possibility.
Oh, that's good.
Mark, so would they be able to purchase lots over at Gene Cope's place?
Gene Cope's parking lot, um...
Because they do have Desi's place.
Yeah, is, is the obvious one in mind. That's too far away.
Oh.
More than 200 feet. So that wouldn't qualify. That was the first thing that I thought of too.
Yeah.
While I was on the phone, I measured it on the map and it is too far.
That might be easier variance to ask for.
It's a numerical standard. They could actually ask for a variance to that if that meets their needs.
They don't mind walking.
Well, the question is, is if you're, you know, if you're renting spaces that far away, are they really legitimately available to you? Are your customers and employees going to walk that far enough? They can probably enforce it on their employees and maybe that solves the problem. But that's, that's a theoretical discussion about a proposal that's not in front of you. But yes, if, if that seems to be their best alternative, they could, at least in theory, apply for that variance, 200 to 400 feet or whatever it was. But it's not before you. It would be a separate application at a future date.
Okay. Okay, then the pertinent criteria to be considered are on the staff report listed in the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, and evidence. Persons who testify shall receive the recognition of the chair, state their full name, mailing address, and if representing, if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant? No? So, so is there any recommendations on how we want to proceed with this request?
We did get the letter from Mike Benfield.
That pertains to the next item on your list, not this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I move that this time we deny the variance because they didn't meet the, they didn't meet the conditions that we'd set out and hopefully one of the other alternatives will work out for them.
I second that. Roll call?
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritzky?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, this is a continuation of the quasi judicial public hearing regarding the consideration of V-18-04 Tolavan Architect's request for a setback reduction in conjunction with the replacement of existing dwelling at 707 North Laurel. The applicant, Tolavan Architect, on behalf of Tom and Brenda Suppley, is requesting a setback reduction to, to permit a seven-foot side yard setback and a zero setback for wetland in conjunction with the replacement of existing dwelling. The property is located at 707 North Laurel, tax lot 6502, map one, I mean, 51019AA in a residential low-density zone. The property is owned by Thomas and Brenda Suppley, municipal code section 17 dot 10 dot 04OB4 standards. Request a minimum 15-foot setback, 15-foot side yard setback on the corner, corner lot. Municipal code chapter 17 dot 43 establishes a wetland buffer area. The request will be reviewed against the municipal code section 17 dot 84030 variance criteria for granting. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a personal bias? Has any commissioner had an ex parte contact since April 26 hearing? Has the commissioner members made a site visit? Staff report?
As on the previous one, Commissioner Patrick was not at the prior hearing, but she listened to the audio tape and for the same reasons was qualified to participate in this decision.
Okay.
You continued the hearing last month for two reasons. One, it allowed us to correct a flaw in the notice. We had shifted the notice a little bit too far east. That, met some people on the west side, were not notified and should have been. We re-notified that group and so now we have the correct notice out there. The second reason for continuing the hearing is you spoke with the applicant's architect about some alternative locations of the building on the site. He's given you some revised drawings. Those are attached in your materials on 11 by 17 sheets. I believe David's brought those in larger format and can walk you through what, how that works, you know, what that reconfiguration amounts to on the site. We also have two pieces of correspondence that have come in since your last hearing from the nearby property owners, Mike Benfield and Clay Newton. And those are in front of you on the dais.
Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, argument, and evidence. Persons who testify should be recognized by the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes, I'm David Veneta, Tolavan Architects, and I represent the Suppleys at this hearing. What I wanted to do is bring, as Mark mentioned, enlarged versions of the drawings that you have in front of you as well and just go through them with you on the alternative design.
Okay.
We use this chair as an eagle?
Well, maybe we should have kept that box.
It's in great shape in the back room.
So, actually, the continuation of this hearing, I kind of saw as a, as a blessing in terms of an opportunity to not only listen to your concerns, but hopefully respond to them in a positive manner and make this project hopefully better for, for the community. One of the things I heard from you was the concern about the setback to 11. And so what I had done is actually, and I'll show you the floor plan, I've actually reduced the size of scale of the house down by about 300 square feet. Number one, to, to allow the house to meet that five-foot setback, but also to get within the allowable 0.5 F A R.
Okay, so I'm not exactly seeing, they, it's this reduction, the line through, through there?
Yeah, that, that dash line that you see right there is the five-foot setback. And this larger, darker dash line right here is the wetland.
And so, but the, the, the line that's, this, this line, what's this about?
Oh, that, that is the setbacks. We, this is the actual table you see here is the required setbacks, so 15 on the side, 15 in the front, five on the side and five in the rear.
Okay.
Case on a corner lot.
So, but what I want to know is...
This portion, is that the 300 that you're taking off from your, your original house drawing? Actually, let me show you on the floor plan. And I thought you might ask that question. So basically what I did was shrink the plan. I reduced it in length by two feet this direction. I reduced the portion two feet in width. I reduced the width of the house in this direction by about three feet.
Okay.
And so basically I shrunk the house.
Okay.
Do the miracle of AutoCAD. Basically, literally reduce it. I shrink it by 300 square feet.
Okay.
I made the, the lower floor reduced by 160 square feet. The, excuse me, the lower floor 150 square feet, the upper floor 160 square feet, about 310 total square feet. So what that allowed me to do was not only meet the five-foot setback, but it also increased the side yard setback to the, to 7th street right away. So instead of asking for a seven-foot setback there and doing the 15-foot requirement, we can actually ask for a, a 10-foot setback for a reduction of five feet instead of a reduction of eight. Now, what that does however is slide the house to the west. So we now have an 11-foot front yard along Laurel Street in lieu of a 15. So we had to give up something in order to locate the house on the building a portion away from that. So we do in fact meet the five-foot wetland setback and we have increased the setback to the south along 7th street. But the garage portion of the house, not the house itself, but just the garage portion is 11 feet from Laurel Street, 17th street. Now, the front porch I mentioned, and I know at least you in the picture took a look at the large front porch we had before, and I think you asked whether we could improve or add more square footage there. And so that's in fact what I did. I reduced the, the front porch by, by two feet in order to pull the house further forward. So the house and the porch meet the front yard setback. The only exception is this corner of the house, this corner, excuse me, corner of the garage projects approximately four feet into this front yard. So it's a, I think, a good compromise in terms of allowing them the square footage. Now, I frankly convinced them that yes, we're reducing it by 300 square feet, but we're also asking for less of a variance. And based on my experience, you know, they need to ask for the least amount they can live with. And so I've tried to convince them, and I think have been successful, in redesigning their house, thinking smaller and thinking, thinking less of the variance in response to your concerns. So, any questions?
This is going to sound really stupid, but on that drawing, I just want you to show me the changes, exactly what the wetland change is.
This is the wetland boundary right here, this...
The second dash line, the one farthest this way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, correct. And that's the five-foot wetland setback from that wetland lot. So the house now meets the wetland setback.
Okay, but the porch or the deck still extends into the wetland, right?
Right, right. And I think as Mark stated before, that's kind of a separate issue with the division of state lands, Army Corps of Engineers.
And how, how tall is that deck? 20, 20 inches?
Oh, no, no, no. It's, that's 20 feet in dimension.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to be nearly on the ground. It's going to be...
So it's less, less than 30 inches? Okay, all right.
Yeah. So again, this is the wetland boundary, the dark one. That's the wetland setback. So the house could pull less in order to get it out of that setback and here to the apartment.
And the deck goes to where?
Now, the deck is, we aren't even going to commit that deck right away. We're going to, you know, jumping to the... We're going to, you know, jumping through the hoops with Division of State Lands and Army Corps of Engineers, it's no small feat. So, we're going to be pursuing the building permit for the house and garage, and then pursue the decks totally as a separation. So again, what I had tried to emphasize to the Souplees is, and I submitted revised calculations to Mark on both lot coverage and floor area ratio, because if you recall previously, I was above 0.5 allowable FAR. So by reducing it by that 310 square feet, we got to 0.5 FAR, which is the maximum allowed in the RL zone for lots of 5,000 square feet. That also put us at 41% lot coverage. Again, the allowable is 50%. So we're actually well below the allowable lot coverage, but because of the existence of the wetlands, we can't achieve that 50%. So I feel pretty good that this design accomplishes what we were hoping to accomplish.
So the-
This is the reasonable request.
The total floor area is about 3215? Is that the number you have, or?
I've got, right around 2860 for the quote.
And that includes the garage?
Yes, that includes the garage.
Must have the old map.
Yes, yeah. Those are the numbers. Now, the floor plans again look very similar to what we had before. It's just, again, everything shrunk, including the front porch. So, the only thing that didn't shrink was the length of the garage and masquerade and 24, you know, the garage just stand at 24 feet with washer dryer again. So, it's really as tight as I could make it. And again, by reducing the width of the porch, I was able to comply with the front yard setback for the house and porch. There's only a corner of the garage that actually projects into the front yard setback.
Is, so, the setback for a wetland, the buffer for a wetland is five feet?
Correct, yes.
Even if it's fish bearing, or even if there's fish in it?
Yeah, I don't think, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's a differentiation between wetlands, wetland is a wet-
This buffer has a five-foot, this wetland has a five-foot buffer. There are a couple of stream corridors that have a larger buffer, but not this particular wetland.
So, you say the washer and dryer are in the garage?
Yes.
Couldn't they put it in a bathroom? And then they could meet the setback on the street?
It could, yeah. I mean, if we relocated it into the house, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just an idea.
Yeah, I mean, that would reduce, you know, right now we're projecting four feet into the front yard setback. That would reduce it to, I mean, that's unreasonable. If you live with that.
So if you did that, then, then what would you have left to ask for variance for?
Two feet.
Two feet and-
In the front yard.
And the front yard.
Yeah, basically, it would then be a two-foot setback into the front yard and a five-foot reduction of setback on the side yard. Because again, this is, even though Seventh Avenue does not exist, the rightway does, and therefore this is considered a corner line. And so therefore, the setbacks, again, based on this dark dash line here, are 15, 15. So we're now 10 and 11.
Okay.
So we do still need a variance of five feet here.
There's still two areas that need a variance?
Yeah.
Even if you put the washer and dryer in the bathroom?
Well, if we relocate the washer and dryer, yes, we would then be asking for a two-foot variance.
Just a lesser one?
Yeah, a lesser.
And it meets, and it's your position that according to the code, it, right now, as you've drawn, the new configuration meets the wetland setback and there's no issue as far as the wetland?
Yes.
And is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, Bill pointed out to me that there may be a problem on the northeast corner of the lot. It's pretty minor, excuse me, northeast corner of the house. It's fairly minor, but that wetland, at least on my drawing, appears to wrap around.
Oh, right, right here.
So that, right there at that corner, there'd be-
There, you don't have the five-foot setback there?
Yeah, there'd be an encroachment right at that corner. You wouldn't be approaching into the wetlands, you're approaching into the buffer, as I read it anyway.
Is that what you think?
Oh, yeah, that's, that is correct.
So, so-
So just that corner of the house, though, as I see this?
Right. But so then, so then it's not just those two sides, it's also the wetland buffer, you're asked, you'd be asking for three, a variance for three things then? For the wetland buffer on the-
Northeast corner.
Northeast corner, and the other two on the street sides.
Yeah. So, just kind of scaling that, that little green dashed line right there would represent the overlap and the five-foot buffer within the corner of the house right there. That's correct. So, it's this little-
And that could be solved by making that whole side of the house the, this is east, right? I'm just turned around.
East to be on the right-hand side.
Yeah, by making the whole east side, reducing the size of the house by enough on the whole east side, because you wouldn't want to funny, you know, you may not want to make it a weird shape like that. But, but if you reduce the size of the house on the east side by enough that you didn't go into that buffer, right? Is that possible?
Well, you probably carve out a corner of the house like that.
Oh, you could do that.
Yeah, it'd be a little unusual, but it could. I mean, if we-
Could look cool.
Yeah. We lose the best side table.
Yeah.
We prefer not to, but, you know, it's, it's a challenging site.
Yeah.
It's a unique situation. The wetlands is, frankly, the shape of the wetland was set up by the original house and decks. So if you look at the original survey, you know, the wetland is really, that, the wetland determination was done as a result of how the house was placed on the site and the building around it.
Huh.
And so the wetland was, you know, that came second in a way, if you will, in that if the house had never been built there, the wetland could have assumed the entire site. So, the reason it is where it is, is it's due to the fill around the site when you build the house.
So they actually filled the wetland to build the house?
I'm sure that's, that would have been the case, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So are there any other presentations by opponents? Are there any presentations by opponents?
I have a free response.
Actually, I have, we have-
Thank you, Jeff.
I would respect it if you wanted to get that long man tonight.
Good evening, my name is Clay Newton. I live at 3524 Northeast Clickitat Street in Portland. I live across the street, or rather have a house across the street from the, this proposed, from 707 Laurel. I first had a question about, maybe this is for you, Mr. Barnes, and I hope this is a proper forum for it, but I first have a question about notification periods or processes in Cannon Beach. This is actually the second time I've been involved in three different issues where I didn't initially receive notification of an action. My question is, what is the process for, how is it handled? Does the applicant circle the lot that the notification period, notification area is designated off? Does the planner do that? What is the process for handling that? Is that true, Alicia?
Do you want to answer?
No, I think Alicia wants to answer.
Go for it.
Just to make sure that-
Oh. Great. Okay, so, am I okay to ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Does the applicant make that determination in terms of what lot is used to start the, as a center point, I guess, if you will, as the notification period? Or is that done through your office?
I do a buffer, use a, on the website.
Okay. Can you explain to me what happened such that we weren't notified in the first round?
This is actually my error, and I really don't want my staff cross-examined.
Oh, okay.
That really is not appropriate.
Okay.
Certainly I can be. It was my error. I, we had, we pick a lot and set up the buffer. We select, the applicant actually owns two lots here, and we've selected the wrong one. It was an error I made. And that's, that's what we corrected on the second notice.
Oh, okay.
And I think Mr. Newton's house is on the west side, so the earlier error omitted his, and the second notice picked him up.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I understand errors happen, I just, I was confused by that. So, did you all receive my letter? I sent it in earlier today, and I apologize for the delay. I know you guys read a lot, but-
It's on the dais.
Have you all had a chance to look at it? So I'm not going to read that. I am, I was taking notes and listening, and really this is the first time I've had any chance to hear anything meaningful on this, on this proposal, and get some new information tonight. Mr. Barnes, maybe this is best for you, just to make sure I'm clear, there's a 10-foot setback off of a wetland with a, with a five-foot buffer? Is that correct?
No, there's, in this case, a five-foot buffer from the wetland, which is the same as a setback.
Okay.
In the wetland apartments, they call them buffers, or houses they call them setbacks, but it's really the same thing.
Okay, okay.
From the wetland boundary.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm not going to, I'm not going to reiterate anything that I've already told you, but I did hear one interesting bit of information tonight. And I addressed this initially in my letter to you, and that is this. You could miss that that property sits almost entirely on a wetland, like you could miss the sun comes up in the morning. It is wet year-round. Tonight, I heard for the first time something new that I didn't know, that, but might have assumed, and that was Phil was put in that site to get above that wetland. That property is wet year-round. I think that's something you should consider, as the concern that I have is there has been a slow erosion of what that site should have been developed with. It is currently developed with a house that was set there on the wrong property, or on the property line that touched Seventh Street. We allowed, or did not object to, that property line being moved under the, under the understanding that it was to help neighbors settle a lot line dispute. It was not one more erosion to allow a site, one more step toward an erosion of what that site was initially intended to be, or not be, as the case ought to be more aptly put. And I, in hearing that the house is set on Phil, I just don't see why, I'm not opposed to remodeling the house, but if special variances have to be added to make that site work when it practically just doesn't, and didn't, I don't see why that should be accommodated for, when so many other steps that are not a part of the process, or should not have been a part of the process, have been taken to get them to the point where that's even a possibility. That house can be remodeled. It can, something, you know, I'm not saying destroy the house, that's not fair, it's a non-conforming house. Don't continue to add on. Please don't continue to add on to the site that should, that should not be what it is even today. Thank you for your time.
Is there any additional testimony? Okay, any staff response?
One thing you may want to ask David Vanneta is how the parking requirements met. There's a two-car off-street parking requirement here. I understood how it was on the old site plan, but it's not entirely according to me how this will work on the new site plan. I mentioned this to him, so I know he's got a plan, but I just haven't seen it yet.
Okay. David, you want to address that?
Yeah. As you are aware, the code requires two parking spaces on site. One of them can be in the garage, the other one in the driveway. Because we have 11-foot setback rather than 15-plus setback, the other parking space would simply be in front of the house on the pro, so it is accommodated, and it's shown here. I revise this, so I've updated it for tonight's hearing. It doesn't show on your plan, but I did want to illustrate to you that there is room for a second car on the side.
So, that, if that car is in the front there, is that going to be on gravel, or what's the base going to be?
Uh, no, it would be on concrete, just like the driveway. So, yeah. So you can see that, that would accommodate the second car.
David, I know you went over this, I just don't remember, I'm just, my head's just full of sand dunes. But I just, I just want to know, the old house, the current house is how many square feet?
Uh, boy, I, I actually, that brings up another, I don't have an exact, well, what I do have is a survey-
Or even an estimate.
Yeah. I do have a survey of the existing house. You know, so that green outline you see right here is the existing house. And, let's see. I'll leave this for you, because I know it is complicated. And let me do this real quick. I brought a red pen that I can mark up for you on my site plan-
Oh, good.
-the shape of the existing house. So essentially, what you're seeing, the white-black line here is the outline of the new house, but I just highlighted in red is the existing house.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out about how many more square feet addition there is altogether.
David, I'll keep that in the record with the picture.
Yes.
Good enough, thank you.
That does bring up another issue that I wanted to mention. I actually brought copies of a property inspection that was done on the existing house. It was 34 pages long, so it was pretty complete. I can tell you that based on, and I'm happy to present this to you, and I brought multiple copies, but based on the outcome of this property inspection, it's pretty obvious that that house is in such poor condition, it would, not only in economic sense, but just from a practical matter, the amount of deficiencies in the house which is prohibited from being remodeled. You know, it's just, you know, I know some of the opponents would like to see it remodeled, but as a practical matter, it's just not.
So, so then is the remodel, what percentage of the assessed value is the remodel?
Would a remodel be?
Uh-huh. I mean, of this, what you've asked for here, what percentage of the assessed value are you, is, are they asking for, for this new house?
Well, I'm sure it exceeds the 50% limit, if that's what you mean.
It is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why we're here for variance, because-
Well, for other reasons too, because of the setbacks.
Right.
That's what I understood, yeah. But it also, because it exceeds 50% of this assessed value, so therefore, that's another issue, because generally, that's what, you're supposed to bring that into conformance when you have over 50% of the assessed value, correct?
Right. And based on, based on the- And, and based on, based on the location of the existing house, I'd still be back here for a variance, because if you can see, the existing house is within 7 feet of that site.
Right. But the other alternative is to bring the whole house into conformance.
The whole exist, oh, the whole new house?
Yeah. In, in every way. The setback from the wetland, the setbacks from either street. That is a, that is an option, right?
Yeah. However, we wouldn't be able to achieve the 50% FAR and, and the percentage of lot coverage that I think, you know, properties are entitled to by building.
In other words, it wouldn't be as big as it, you think, or they would want it to be.
Correct.
But by how much? I mean, do we know that? How, I mean, how much, how much smaller would it have to be? It's, right now, the new house, it says here 2860 square feet. So, if you brought it into conformance in all ways...
Right.
How much smaller would it actually be?
Um...
Or is that just too much of a question for right here? Because I know that, I don't want you to have to do a bunch of math right here.
Right. Um, probably in neighborhood, 400 square feet.
The house would be 400 square feet?
Less.
Less? Not, not total?
Not, no, no, no.
Okay. So, so it would be, so you could bring it all into conformance, and it would still be 20, about 2,400 square feet?
Um, I take that backwards, two stories. Yeah, it would probably, it would probably close to like 2,200 square feet.
Oh.
The, the challenge that they put, too many, is that they are really hoping to build this as a, for their extended family. You know, they're not going to be using it as a vacation rental, and that's, that's never entered into their discussions. They're actually designing this for stays by their extended family. And so, not only do they have someone that's actually in a wheelchair, who is Phil or sister, but they really see this as a family retreat, to bring their children and grandchildren here for extended vacations.
And 2,200 is too small to do that? Really?
Well, I, I have topped them down by 300 square feet already, so, yeah, they're, I mean, I've done as much adjectives I can, frankly.
But, but maybe, but maybe they, as they, maybe they have to reconform their wishes. I mean...
Yeah, they, they think they have already.
Oh, okay.
But they haven't.
Right.
Maybe they think that.
Well, you know, they're, they're, they're seeing me as their, their guide through this process, if you will. And so, I'm, lately, I'm, I'm massaging them as a client as much as I can, and enlightening them to the ways of Cannon Beach, and what I have to do to get this approved. And hopefully, I'll be successful with that.
Did they own the original house?
Uh, no. They did, the Fraser family owned it previously, and so they bought it. John Crater passed away.
Yeah, a year or two ago.
At auction.
At a shit, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, do they do their research when they got the property to know that they had some challenges like this?
Um, I'm not sure what, how much they were aware of when they bought the property.
Of course, I guess they would, because the Soupleys had the issue earlier.
Yeah. Their, their parents owned this property, and so, when it became available, it was obvious that it made sense for them to purchase it as well. So, again, it kind of lends itself to the whole family compound idea of, you know, mom and dad, and grandma and grandpa, and then the extended family. So, again, it's, they're really seeing it as a facility to house their entire extended family, grandchildren, right next door to the grand...
So, I, not that it makes all that much difference, but when I went by and took a look at it, are there any utilities in the house right now?
Um, oh, yeah, I'm su, I'm sure it's served by, you know, sewer water.
But it doesn't look like there's any electrical.
I don't think there's anything connected. I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think anything's exactly right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Huh?
Okay. Are there any other presentations? Okay, any staff response?
That's it.
Okay, then that closes the public hearing. Okay, folks. You have some things on your mind.
Well, I, I grow tired of seeing proposals like this, that if this were just vacant land, nothing on it, and someone said, "Oh, I want to buy that lot," and immediately, that person would have to be restrained to a smaller house than is being proposed here. I mean, you know, they could come and to this body and ask for whatever kind of relief that we've been asked for tonight, but the lot is the lot, and it has the limitations that the lot has. And I think it's, frankly, nearly a violation of our comprehensive plan to allow this kind of expansion, you know, lot that probably should never have been built on in the first place, just because somebody wants 3,000-square-foot house, where you could squeeze probably a 23, 2300-square-foot house.
22, he said.
Or 22 into the, into the lot and make it conformable. And I think we ought to stand up for that.
Well, I, I think you're, you're right in that it's a new house, and when it's a new house, it seems like that's the time you do address what you can build on that place.
Exactly.
You know, and, yeah, it's, it's certainly the way I would be looking at the property if I was going to develop it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I so appreciate the architect's efforts to try and, you know, placate his client and to come up with ways, creative ways to, to make this work. I really do.
Well, I mean, I've seen David do this over and over and over on lots that are bizarre, and try to pull a rabbit out of the hat.
Yeah.
And, and...
And I think he could do it. And I think you could have a family compound, if you were really creative, and I think he could be really creative, with 2,200 square feet. I do. You just, you know, there's so many ways to do that. And...
Small is beautiful.
Yes. There's all those wonderful books about building small. I mean, you know, I mean, it's just, but I'm just saying, there's, it's just, it doesn't seem like a compelling, you know, and they're not, I mean, certainly, this is, 2,200 square feet is a reasonable use of the property, and I, I just, you know, and there's, I don't see a hardship.
There are a lot of 1,600-square-foot houses that are...
Yeah.
Twenty-two, 2,200 sizable house.
It is, and I, I just, I don't know. And you could still stay within, you wouldn't have to ask for a variance. And the, the one that really bothers me is the northeast corner into the wetland, because they're already gone into that so much, you know. But it's not just that, it's the, it's the 50% rule. That bothers me too. You know, it's, it, this is not just a variance on a corner lot that maybe isn't really a corner lot on two sides. It's, it's way more than that. It's asking us to go, you know, to go outside the 50% rule, it's asking us to go into the setbacks on the sides, it's asking to go into the wetland setback. I mean, that's three setbacks and the 50% rule. And I just, I don't know. I, I just think that he needs to pull another rabbit out of his hat.
Just make it a smaller breed. You don't want those big mothers, you know?
And, and, you know, I'm sure that the client's going to be disgruntled and et cetera, et cetera, but it's not his fault, it's, it's just the way the code's written.
Well, somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I, I move that we deny this proposal.
I second it.
Roll call?
Commissioner Mert?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know where you can get some rabbits.
They're in our neck of the woods.
I love our rabbits.
They are very tasty after the first part.
Oh, don't, no. No, 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 no. I love them.
Okay.
My dog wants to love them, but I don't let him.
What else do we have? Oh, we have the tree.
Lead the bundle.
This will go pretty fast.
Okay, do I have a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
I saw a move.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Mert?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ridley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Signing.
Okay, the next item to discuss is the tree removal amendments. Let's see here, what do I need to read on this?
This is a work session item, it's not a hearing, so there really are no...
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to mention on the tree removal, there on, let's see if these are numbered. Well, first thing, that on attachment A, I take offense with the very last sentence there about fruit trees and, but it's, "Fruit trees may exceed this threshold and not be desirable due to retaining, due to fruit litter." Let's not call fruit litter. And then also in here...
Where is that?
I still keep seeing, and I, I know we discussed this many times in the past, but I don't think I've marked it on here, where the replacement trees is stated at being 3 foot high, and I think we've always said it should be 6 foot high. But there's two, two places in here, if, oh, yeah, okay. So, on page four at the bottom, the replacement tree shall be at least 3 feet high, and I think we've always said they need to be 6 foot high. And there's, let's see, did I mark that on this? Yeah, it's the same thing, the last page on attachment C, it's the same thing, the replacement tree shall be at least 3 feet high, and that should be 6 feet high. That's all I have.
All I'm asking tonight is that, if, if you're so inclined, is to direct me to schedule this for public hearing in June.
Oh.
The, the city council kicked this back to you because of this late testimony from Will Kaplan, or they thought that it was relevant in time, and they also wanted you to hear it. So, the question is, is do I incorporate some or all of Will's comments, plus your comments, into a revision for you to hold a hearing on in June, or not?
Well, I don't like some of his comments.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I don't want to see them incorporated, and, I mean, but I think, I mean, they're obviously on the table, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, the council's asking whether you want another bite at the apple here, since we're talking improvement, of course. So, it's, it's your call entirely. If you say, "Nope, we're done with this," I can, I'll take it back to the council for a vote. If, if you want to look at some or all of Will's comments in context of some further revisions, then we should schedule it for you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That doesn't mean you have to adopt the whole plethora of them, or any of them, but the question is...
You definitely want to look at them.
The only question for tonight is, should I schedule this for hearing in June?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, I will do so.
All right. Any ongoing planning items?
Nothing else to report.
Oh, I have a question, though. So, on, on my favorite piece of property, you know, with the, with the living wall, what's the status on that now? I know you sent a letter to him.
Yeah, I've had a number of conversations with, with Mr. Nicholson, Dr. Nicholson, and he...
He's a dentist, not a doctor.
He's, he had to do two, several things. The two that pertain to the wall, one was he had to finalize the building permit that we approved for the wall, that was never final inspected. And he, his engineer and our building inspector are working on wrapping that up, and I'm pretty confident that that's going to happen. It's just a matter of getting them both on the site at the same time. The second part of it was planting the living wall, and he was to get me a specific schedule and plan for that within a certain amount of time, and I can't remember how much time I gave him right now.
It's already overdue by at least six months.
He's, he's well overdue, but he, he said, "Look, I'm, I'm meeting with my landscape contractor this week," and I said, "Okay, fine, as soon as you've met with your landscape contractor, get me that plan so we can get this going." And that's what I'm waiting on now, is he and his landscaper to give me back a plan and a schedule. They need to get it done this spring. They both, both the landscaper and the, and Nicholson know that, so...
Where is this landscaper located?
In Cannon Beach.
And, and I, what, I, since I missed the meeting with the council, was this, is any of this, sort of as a, a process discussed at the council and Planning Commission joint sort of discussion about the idea of when you get permission to do something like this and you don't comply, is there any recourse? Or is it just a, you know, otherwise, if there's no teeth in your request, then what's the point? You know, I mean, you have to, I mean, we don't, we can't, we're not fining him, we're not, you know, we're allowing him to go forward with it in his own sweet time, actually. You know, "Well, I didn't get it done when I said I would." He's, he's really late.
Well, and this was a unique proposal. It should have more teeth than...
It really should.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, I, I mean, how, where, what is the forum to discuss something like this? Because there, there must be some, how do you do, you, do I go to a council meeting and complain to them, or what?
That's certainly an option that's available to you.
What are you doing?
Oh, forget that.
I mean, I, I, I am working with him, I believe that he's making progress, I know it's not at the speed that we'd all like.
Not the speed he agreed to, Mark. He agreed to have this done by a certain time, and he didn't do it. So, it's not like just that, you know, I mean, this, it's disturbing to me that it's so lax, and I don't understand, I'm not clear on why. Is it just the way that things are written, or...
We spent how many meetings on this guy?
Oh, my goodness. Then he brings in the cast from Portlandia to testify on his behalf. I mean, come on.
If only he had.
And is...
All I can tell you is I'm continuing to work on it, and I believe I'm making progress.
Is it a certified landscape company because the people he had...
Were not.
Working were not.
Yeah.
So, and that was a requirement, too.
Yeah, and I, I, I believe they are, but I haven't checked to go on the...
Would you please?
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, because I saw the license for the previous guy, and he wasn't a certified landscaper. He was applying for one, but whether he got it or not is another issue. I mean, I just think, you know, I, I just, I for one, I'm not going to let this go, because I see it as an incredible, it's a breach of contract on his part.
Well, it is frustrating, and it also is an eyesore. And not, not, not covering the landscape the way it should be is, I mean, to me, that's, that's an offense that should have a fine on it.
Well, the city could just remove the wall.
Oh, yeah.
That's not high on our list of priorities.
Couple sticks of dynamite, that'd be done, I mean, you know, and then he has a big pile of rubble at the top, I mean, the whole thing looks like, you know, I'm not gonna say it, but it looks like that.
Is there an irrigation plan for this wall? Because once you get it planted...
Yeah, he...
If it's not irrigated...
A, a little made with a watering can is gonna go in.
I don't remember...
Yes.
I don't remember if the plan that was approved had a permanent irrigation system, but they, at least in the initial years, they'll have to be irrigated either manually or automatically.
Yes, well, I mean, I don't think you need to be sure that's gonna go in, too.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have a living wall and a dead wall in the same summer.
That's a good point. Okay, good of the order? Alicia?
Rex Amos, five-five-four North Large, "We walk by the living wall every morning, and there are clumps starting to come out, but we don't know what it is, but our main concern are the, the large spruce trees that are protected, all those trees, west of Laurel, and they're letting ivy grow up in the tree, and I hope that you let him know that, to get that ivy out of the, those pine tree, those spruce trees."
Anybody else? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Are you planning on putting these into the online packet?
Yeah, 'cause there was a group we hadn't received yet, right?
Well...
Correct, yes, that's, that's not currently on the packet, but I will, there are these and I'll add them.
I found this. I found this on a, I finally found my, it was sitting on some bottom shelf.